Thank you. I'd like to now call to order this committee, the whole of September 11th, 2025. And at this point in time, I'll ask for this agenda. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing no hands raised, we'll move on. Business arising for minutes. And with that, we will begin with, we have two delegations this morning. The first one is going to be from Bright Shores Foundation. And it is the one-year update. And so I would like to invite our presenters to come forward at this point in time. And the clerks will provide assistance with the lecturer and mic. And I understand you have a presentation. So make sure you're all set up.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. We're really delighted to be here this morning. My name's Amy McKinnon, and I'm the CEO of the Bright Shores Foundation. With me today is Naomi Vauden, who's the Director of Mental Health and Addictions Program at Bright Shores, and Anne Ford is here as well, and she's the CEO of Bright Shores, and she'll join us up here towards the end of our presentation. Today, we're here for a couple of reasons. First of all, we're very grateful for the million dollars commitment from the County of Bruce to the Wellness and Recovery Center. And we just recently celebrated our one-year anniversary in June of having clients in the building. So we're here today to share with you some of the successes of the one-year anniversary. And just to further share with you, this model of care was grown here out of Bright Shore staff. So this model of care that was developed for the Wellness and Recovery Center for treating mental health addictions is now being modeled across the province. There's nineteen facilities across the province that are going to be built. And Naomi and her team have had many tours and discussions with these other municipalities that are having been built, these committees. So I am going to hand it over to Naomi, who's going to share with you more about the facility and the successes after the first year.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting us today. And a really big echo of Amy's words. Thank you for the funding for this project. It's been very exciting. I'm going to try to lean forward here. I'm too short. So as Amy indicated, the facility's been open for a year from June, and we've had just really exciting successes. So just to recap, for those of you who don't remember or are new, just some of the services that we have. So we have a three-week detox program, more traditionally called Detox, but we call it Withdrawal Management. We have a ninety-day treatment program, and we have long-term supportive stabilization for up to ten patients, clients, and they can stay up to a year. We also have community addiction programs. We have a lot of walk-in services. Everyday clients can attend a walk-in if they're just feeling ready and want to connect. We have community mental health programs as well, and walk-in and outpatient leisure recreation programs. We have our injection and clozapine clinics, which are our main tools for stabilizing long-term mental health patients. We have parent family support, which we've really had some great success with. Our family members are really grateful for an opportunity to connect with a worker, especially when their family member is not quite ready for treatment. We've had some great partnerships and the meals in our are provided by CMHA. And I just wanted to highlight one of the clients that I just got an email about today. And this was a patient that was homeless and from Naishinaming. And he's been followed by SOS when he's in this area. He's been followed by our crisis teams, M Heart through CMHA, and M Cert through our hospital programs by OPP, by Owen Sound Police. Let's see if I'm missing anyone, because there was a lot of people involved, our Emerge departments. And I got an email today from OPP just stating how grateful they were that this I would say the Wellness Center, along with the SOS team, have been working so well together and providing an opportunity to collaborate and a central hub to collaborate. And that this individual now has finished their treatment program at the Wellness Center and is moving into their next stage of housing. So this person was very unstable, very unwell, and I really think it's a collaborative between all of our partners, but I would say with the hub with SOS and the Wellness and Recovery Center, we've seen this great success. So in terms, so that's more of the people part of the success, but we also have the numbers part of the success. And so I've got the chart here. And so initially on this chart, what we saw is, one of the metrics we track, track is our thirty-day readmits to our Emerge departments. Because we know that this is not the best place for mental health and addiction clients in the Emerge. So we track that to try to make sure that we're diverting them once they come into Emerge. And so what we've seen over the last five years is, well, on this chart, thirty percent reduction. But we just got updated data and it stated sixty-five percent reduction in ED visit that return rate. So some really great successes, because we know that this provides an opportunity for our patients and clients to get faster access to the Emerge department for other issues, and also more appropriate access to services for our mental health and addiction clients. So to highlight, we have fifty-eight percent of our clients from Gray County. We have, being a Ontario-wide program, we've developed a triaging system. So individuals who are Indigenous are ranked on the triage sheet first, and people from Gray Bruce are second. So our waitlist did go up. We were taking people from outside of the area on our waitlist. But with this triage in place, we weren't able to really accommodate them, and our waitlist grew up to sixty-five people, which wasn't really so really able to accommodate. So what we've done is we've, we've held off on even taking the intakes from people outside Gray Bruce. And so our waitlist now is forty-five individuals. But we've developed a really creative model in which those people that are on the waitlist can come in for day programming if they're from Owen Sound. They can have access to a tablet, and they can have remote access to programming while they're waiting. And we've developed a partnership with our crisis support program, which is off the Emerge, to take two people that are on the waitlist that are more acute. We've also prioritized people that SOS wants to bring in. And so we've gone to overcapacity to flex beds just for the people that SOS want to to bring in, to ensure that it's a very complex patient population that SOS serves. And we really, when they have that moment that they want service, we wanted to give them a bed, even if we were full. So we've done thirty-three thousand outpatient visits from June to June, which is really quite remarkable. And that's a lot of groups, a lot of virtual, a lot of in-person. And what else can I highlight? Thirty-one, at the end of June, thirty-one patients that were homeless prior to going into the program have stable housing. And so two hundred and two clients had finished their individualized treatment program, recognizing that everyone has different goals and objectives. So just for those who haven't been there, you're always welcome to reach out for a tour. This is the picture of the outside facility. It's on six fifteen Sixth Street A East, kind of by the Longhamo Quay building. It's in the Old Baby School. This is a treatment room, just to give you an idea. Just to note the quilts on the beds. So we were just really lucky that our quilting guild donated quilts and ongoing quilts to our program. And this just lovely touch just makes it feel so much more warm and welcoming and less institutional. There's just the two-bedroom room. We were originally just doing single rooms, and we've changed some of those rooms over to double rooms in order to optimize our space and to ensure we can treat as many patients as possible. Wanted to highlight this, that we have a very strong committee that is from our clients, and we really want to empower them to have some control over their life, because the addiction has had control in their life. So we have a strong social committee. This group meets every Thursday with the staff to both address their problems, concerns, and, and look to improve the program and as well to plan social activities. As one client has said, their whole world has been focused on their addiction. So how do you go now to having a healthy social life? This is a picture of the Oasis. It's just a group room where they can do a lot of arts and crafts activities, again, really trying to develop the whole the whole self. The gym, again, just, just reminding people that our lives are full of social and recreation opportunities, and clients who have had an addiction for many years haven't had those developed. So we have a very fulsome program. All of the staff have really jumped in, community partners have jumped in. We have even a secretary doing line dancing on her noon hour breaks. And we have really close relationships with our Indigenous community. We have an elder that comes up twice a week, one, one, two different elders. And they do group and individual counseling. They provide this service to anyone who wants it, actually, not just Indigenous. We just finished the sweat lodge and the fire pit area. And I think we've done three, maybe four sweats by now. One of our non-Indigenous clients made a point of telling us that even though he thought our program was really helpful, really wonderful, and had lots of good to say, he said, it's nothing compared to going to this sweat. So he was non-Indigenous, went to the sweat and said, I just had so many insights into myself from going to that sweat. And here's just another picture. It's kind of neat, those stones that you see on the flip side of the stones are positive messages written by all the clients, because the clients work with our Indigenous partners to build this area. So what's next? We're working with the Bright Shores Research Institute, and we're doing an evaluation, just to not just give you these numbers, but really quantify the outcomes. Now, we're almost done our kitchen. No, we're almost done our roof. Our kitchen has just started. So we've been working hard on workarounds with CMHA to provide food services for our building. So it would be lovely to have the finished kitchen for CMHA to work out of, and for our clients to learn again how to prepare meal and how to yeah, maybe, maybe even more than prepare meal. They may be interested in food services. And we want to do in time some more work on our beautiful property. So we're working on just the site plan, so we can, as we all noted, I think, in earlier conversations here today, lots of funding challenges, but maybe in time, there's a small community projects that can take part of the grounds. So this, we actually found on Google. So it didn't come to us directly, so I'll just read it. I spent five and a half months there, and I'm beyond grateful to the staff and clients. It is a program that you can honestly give your life back if you put the work in. The recovery workers, counselors, facilitators, bubble staff, that's the withdrawal management part. Custodians, the Secretary Crystal, the nurse practitioner, Robin, and the managers, Amy, and Director Naomi. And I'm sure I missed some, are just amazing humans and truly treat you like a friend they are rooting for. I am celebrating six months of sobriety today. I get emotional easy when I hear these stories. And I wouldn't be able to do that without every single person in that building. Please, if you're struggling with addictions and live in the Gray Bruce region, reach out. There is help in life after addiction. It's wonderful. And I would be remiss to not just highlight the work that SOS does in collaboration with the Wellness Center. It really is a fulsome partnership.
Is there any questions for Naomi, or do we have time for questions? I'll put it out for questions, but please don't apologize. It just demonstrates the dedication that you have to your role and the impact that you're making in people's lives. Any questions at this point in time? We'll go to Counselor Greg.
Thank you very much for the presentation here this afternoon. I do have one question. You've got a great partnership established with Fresh Roots, and we know in town, Fresh Roots has been able to leverage community gardens well. Across this country, we have vast amounts of underutilized space, which exists in schools. And I'm just wondering, being an old public school, is like community garden or gardening facility something that you have evaluated or may look at in the future in terms of an opportunity to kind of introduce fresh produce and enhance that lively kitchen production area you've got plans for?
Yes, it's definitely on the plan. On the original plan, we had a greenhouse as well as gardens. Obviously, we have to really apply to different ministries for that kind of funding. But that is one of the projects, even the gardens, that we envision the community could jump in and use. So we wanted the site plan so that we didn't just start putting a garden here and a garden there, and then maybe, you know, take up the space for the greenhouse vision. So it's a very important part of our project, and we see it also providing food for the facility. So it's like right now, they, we have two OT leisure rates, we call them occupational therapy leisure rates, and they are doing some small-scale gardening. But that is one of the items that we look forward to in the future. And certainly partnerships are the way to go there, because we don't have that expertise at all.
Okay, I'll just look around. We'll go to Counselor Keveney, and then over to Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to share that last night I had the privilege at a board meeting to your presentation from Lavender Lille, who I know works with your organization. And she talked to us as a board about how to approach someone in crisis, should they come into that particular building. And I just found it really valuable, and I just, as a thought, wondered if at some point perhaps that training perhaps could come to county council, because we never know in our own lives when we might be in a circumstance like that. So I'll just leave that with you.
Lavender's one of our managers in mental health and wonderful resource. Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, County Council, and thank you for the presentation. I wonder if you could speak to staffing, the compliment, like how many staff are on site daily?
I don't know why it keeps kicking off, but we have over sixty staff there. So we moved our mental health teams there as well. So we had the addiction program, which I believe is about thirty-two staff. And numbers are not my strong point to remember, but I believe it's around thirty-two and sixty-some. So work there, because we moved over some mental health teams. We're really, we're trying to merge in historically, mental health and addictions were very separate, and we know, I think we all know here intuitively, they belong together. And so we were trying to do that by moving our mental health programs in. And as well, there's cost savings and really great synergies.
Okay, and it's not you. It's only one mic can be on at one time. So, so don't worry, we've got it. Technology is trying to control us, but we're in control of the technology. Any other questions before we move on to the next part of the presentation? I do not see any further hands up. Good. So I think we're ready to progress. So I'm going to turn my mic off so that you can turn yours on.
There we go. Good morning, everyone. I'm Anne Ford, the President and CEO of Bright Shores. My apologies, I'm moving a little bit slower today, because I had the pleasure of meeting some of the Gray County paramedics about seven weeks ago, when I broke both of my ankles at my home. It was fabulous. Anyway, I'm up and running and moving, but today's not about me, it's about you, and to thank you for everything that you've done for the Wellness Center, but also just for Bright Shores Health System. The AMO, we were, we were very happy to be asked to be providing some input into some of the documentation that went forward. I know you were all talking about healthcare at AMO, so we really appreciate that advocacy, because it's a frontline advocacy for all of us and really solidifies what we're trying to bring forward to the provincial government as we try to move this forward. The other thing I'm here for today is to ask you for your participation in our next strategic plan. So we are in the process, we're the very last year of our current strategic plan. So we're kicking off in October with engagement, both internal and external engagement through the months of October and November to speak to anyone and everyone we can across the region around their healthcare. What they think we're doing well, what we're not doing well, but actually then provide us with feedback. So one of the first groups we want to talk to is you. As you represent all of the residents and businesses within your communities, it would be great to get some feedback from you on what you're thinking, of what's happening in your communities, and where things are going. We know, we are, you know, we've known this unfortunately for twenty years, but we all know we're going to be living with an increased seniors population. That seniors population is going to drive needs, more needs for lots of community-based and social services and healthcare. We're already starting to see the impact of chronic disease, and it's not just one, it's multiples of chronic disease of folks coming into our ER and being admitted. So having that really round view of what's happening within your communities. I heard long-term care mentioned. I know we're already, you know, working with Gray on some other things. So from your perspective, be great. So you also know, though, as we go out to talk to the community, I know we're going to be in Owen Sound as a community event sometime where you're bringing in community social programs. We will be there asking our direct community some questions and just getting feedback. So if you have things happening within your communities, or I know our communications department will be reaching out to everyone. We'd like to put up a table and just have some, you know, general conversations. There's no presentation per se. It's just asking folks what they think and where we're going. This will be a five-year plan. So we are looking at the data. We're finding out what our patients are going to look like. We know the populations are going to be growing. And it's not just about our large earth center here in Owen Sound, it's about the Markdale, about Nefertiti, and our other partner hospitals that are in Bruce County. How are we managing? How are we looking at that regional system to manage the stroke that comes in from Lion's Head? And I know that that's Bruce County, but that comes in from Lion's Head. And finally, I'll finish off with a shout out to Naomi and her team for mental health. The addictions, both in the treatment centers, one piece. You may know, we also have a large component of inpatient beds, both geriatric and inpatient beds for mental health here at Owen Sound. We have some pediatric beds, not enough. We're advocating for a couple more pediatric beds, because the only pediatric mental health beds other than here in London. So you can imagine trying to get one of pediatric patient. So we're looking more at adolescent. We're working very closely with Keystone on their, their children's mental health. But shout out to that, but also I need, I can't, I'd be remiss if I don't shout out to all of our staff and physicians. The summer has been busy. We know our seasonal folks come in, and we're getting ready for surge season. Hopefully, the flu's not too bad this year. So shout out to all of these folks. They all live in our communities. They do one hell of a job. It's amazing the dedication that they put into their roles. So I'll stop there, but really looking forward to talking to you more both at this session, and we will be reaching out individually to your offices to see if there's anything happening in your communities where we can just talk to folks. So thank you. I'm happy to take if there's any questions, I know.
Thank you very much. And so are there any questions for either CEO Ford or CEO McKinnon as well with the presentation? We'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Good morning, Anne. And I didn't recognize you coming in the door. I didn't think you were, I didn't know who was in the locker, so I apologize for that. Yeah, I will say, like, just as a small part, we in Green Heights had the Grand Rodeo for the last five years, but also the presence, presence of the hospital foundation. And it's, I think it has been quite useful to have that ability for people to understand what that type of equipment is used for, or whatever. And that's what they were very good at. I will say, the other part is from not to speak too much on it, but all our gate receipts for profits went to the hospital foundation. And somebody would say, wow, that seems a little bit of expensive for the, and then it was said, well, it's all going to the hospital. Okay. So that part of fundraising and raising funds for the hospital is that sweet spot that we all know we need. And that just sort of pushed it over the top. So it's, it's a balanced approach when, when you're, when you're raising funds, but everybody needs healthcare. And it just seems to be that, I don't want to call it sacred cow, but it just, everybody understands the need. And when it comes to fundraising and stuff like that, people give. And, but it's also important on the education, and I will say on that part, having a table at those fun, those functions is an opportunity for yourselves and others to communicate what it's all about and why the funds are so important for. And I can't remember all the unique utensils that they would have on that table, but they're pretty expensive. Right? And, and they have to be in it, because they have to be top-notch quality. But again, it just seemed to be that win-win and that communication of just explaining that was so beneficial in that part. So I think that's a good part to keep moving forward on.
Thank you for that, because I know that the foundations, you know, Amy's here in Owen Sound, but we also have four other foundations that are other facilities that do raise money for us, and it's an incredible impact to what we are available to do. I think one of the things, you know, I'm here representing our hospitals. There's a whole community of healthcare that happens outside the hospital. And, you know, even as we look at the strategy, how are we starting to, we already partner, but how are we starting to look more towards our community partners to help us keep patients out of the hospital? No one wants to be in a hospital. No one. I mean, it's one of those things. It's not like you're going to a hotel and having a good time. No one wants to be there. We are a necessity. But what do we need to do in the future to help people stay healthy so they're out of our hospitals? They'll always be needed. Oh, I gotta shut my
Just to follow up to that, Madam Warden, I just, I know people have been listening to the radio the last couple of days, but there's been a new ad program talking about prevention and a new type of updating testing and stuff like that. Is that relatively new? Has anybody heard it recently? It's talking about early screening and, and, and there's like five hundred things that you can get checked out that about cancer and that kind of stuff. It's just, it's a whole new campaign that's, that's out there. I found it's quite it's preventative, preventiveness or early part of detection. And I just wonder if that's a new campaign from the Ministry of Health, but I just, I've noticed that in this past week, there seems to be some ads, which makes sense. I don't know if you have any comments on that.
There is going to be more of a push on prevention and screening. So I think everyone knows, you know, there's already screening for colon cancer, and there's breast screening and the Ontario breast screening guidelines now have reduced the age down to forty for women to actually come in for mammogram, which is fantastic. The cancer rates in younger people are growing for certain things like colon cancer in younger, and we're talking people in their thirties and forties. So there's another push on that. But there, there is going to be more of a push from the ministry and through our OHTs around prevention and how might you be able to, to get some, some of the tests, et cetera, through the community.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Madam Burke, anything online? I don't have my screen. There we go. Okay, great. Well, that looks like that's the conclusion of the questions. We appreciate all three of you coming today and providing the update, and certainly there are lots of good news in what you were able to share with us this morning. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, the clerks have requested we take a brief break between our delegations. So what we'll do is we'll take our mid-morning break at this point in time, and if we could come back, let's try to make it back by eleven-ten, and we'll carry on from there. Thank you very much. and we'll carry on from there. Thank you very much. I'll just encourage our county council members to start coming back forward to their positions. Thank you. Okay, so it looks like we have our quorum back here. Now I can announce that we are actually not going to be entertaining item 4B. That delegation has been postponed to a future meeting, so we'll bring them back at another time. That allows us to move to item five, which is our determination of, of items requiring separate discussion. There are five different items under the consent agenda this, this two days. So I'm going to ask for the items that wish to be pulled and then we'll move the motion to look after the rest of them. Anything through items 6A through 6E that any member wishes to pull for a separate discussion? Counselor Gray.
Thank you for the opportunity. I have 6B that I do have a question related to, so I'd like to pull it, please.
Okay, so that's 6B. Any others? Okay, not seeing any hands online or here around the horseshoe. So with, without 6B, it is recommended that the following consent agenda items be received and that staff be authorized to take actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May ask for a mover and a secondary. Moved by the DEP Warden, seconded by Counselor Dickert. And any discussion? All those in favor? That motion is carried and we will revisit item 6B at the end of our agenda. Okay, so now we'll go on to the items that are scheduled for discussion. That is section seven. The first one that we have is item 7A, Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes. And Director Myers, you'd like to speak to that. Let me get the motion on the floor for you and then offer you the lectern to speak. So with that then, it's recommended that the county of, the county of planning that the county Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes dated August 7th, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. That report E D T C P E D A C 0825 regarding economic development, tourism and culture strategic progress report, August 2025 be received for information. May ask for a mover and a secondary. I've got it moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. It's on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director Myers.
Thank you very much. And through you, Warden, we had an excellent PDUAC meeting. There's a lot of energy in our PDUAC meeting, so thank you to Chair Keabney, who runs those so smoothly. We started the day off with a delegation from Amanda Maja from Henry Burnick Entrepreneurship Center. So as you remember from last year, this was a pilot program and partnership that Gray County entered into to bring that service to this region. We've always had to rely on it through Berry, but we wanted to see what potential there was here, what relationships we could make and what impact it might have by bringing it here to Sidneyham Campus. And it was a really successful pilot. They supported 20 businesses who are not in the startup phase, but in the actual growth stage with things like IP. So until actual property, that is an area we do not get into as staff at the county. That's not an expertise of ours. We were able to tap into their mentors who are through their Berry network. So instead of having to just rely on local mentors that we're able to create, we now have a wider net cast. We also have excellent partnership with the staff at Henry Burnick. And now with Amanda's departure, she is on the other side of the world, I believe, doing her masters now, which is hard to step in the way of that. But we now have Ryan Burl, who will be our contact for this area focused on Gray and Bruce and continuing this good work. So we're really happy with the partnership that we had and lots of excitement. There's a large PowerPoint presentation that you can look at from the PDUAC committee that will take you through all of the wins that we saw across that first year. So that was the first part of our committee. The second, we went into our strategic progress report for August, which is really hard to believe that now we're in September and time is really flying. But a couple of key points to highlight from that report, and the first was the lean training that our economic development, tourism and culture team is going through. So we piloted a lean training last year with our village at Gray Roots, and I'm going to talk to you about some of the successes through that. But this was really looking at ourselves. So our master plan tells us what we need to do to best serve our clients, our municipalities, our businesses. The lean training is for us as a team to make sure that we are resourced, we are structured and we are functioning the way that we can be most efficient. So we're not trying to do more with less. We're trying to do what we need to do in a good way that keeps everybody happy. So that is ongoing and we're excited to continue that on through the rest of the year and be back to you with an update on how that has gone by November. We are also working on the memory and of understanding for Team Gray. So that is a project that is under my portfolio. So I'm working with every one of your CAOs right now. They have all been very generous with their time. We've had two discussions at this point. So they will be getting a draft soon and we'll talk about this at the next leadership forum on October 30th of what this MOU looks like. And it really is about laying out the roles and responsibilities between our member municipality and the county when it comes to economic development and investment readiness. So how we can work best together in a cohesive manner. We celebrated the launch of our newest gather video, which was featuring downtown Owen Sound businesses and really taking a moment to celebrate all of the good people and all of the good business we have in downtown Owen Sound. So if you haven't seen it already, I do encourage you to take a look at that because it really has been a great opportunity to tell a different story and to recognize all of the good that we have across our communities. Business Enterprise Center, I did want to highlight this. So as Randy had mentioned before, this was one of the delegations for AMO. But just to give you an idea, from April to June, so in that three-month period, the Business Enterprise staff handled 144 inquiries. They had 33 one-on-one consultations. They supported 10 businesses to sustain, seven businesses to expand and five businesses to be purchased in that three-month period. So the services are very, very valuable. There is no shortage to knocks on their door. And what's really interesting, most business enterprise centers, you have the option to be in-person or virtual. In Gray County, 70% of our clients choose to come in person. So they will drive across the county to come to Sidneyham to sit down and have that consultation with the enterprise center. And I think that's really important. It's just, it bodes well to the relationships they've built in this region and the impact that they're having. They also did an intensive series and between eight workshops, had 173 participants come through those eight workshops. And those were intensives, taking care of the person behind the business and the things that we hear as the greatest barriers and the greatest threats to businesses today. With Sidneyham Campus, we also celebrated our doors. So if you haven't been to Sidneyham lately, we have new exterior doors. They actually lock and close, which is amazing. They look excellent. And it's really brought a whole new look and feel to the hallways because we went full floor-to-ceiling glass. So it just opened the space up and brought a lot of natural light. So anytime you wish to celebrate those doors at Sidneyham, please go ahead because every time I walk down the hall, we get excited. I'll talk in just a second about our regional marketing and summer students. But Gray Roots, we have had a banner year at Gray Roots. We knew dinosaurs was going to be big, but I think what gets all of our staff most excited is that when we see visitors coming in, whether they're residents or they're coming to the area, they're lured in by dinosaurs or whatever our traveling exhibit is. But when they leave, they tell us their favorite parts are our Gray County Gallery and Morrison Heritage Village. So it's the things that we do every day year-round, that's what they love the most. And that I think is really important to recognize the good work that staff have done, the fact that they are delivering what people are looking for and we're helping tell the story of Gray County. So that's just a note that we wanted to make. And as I mentioned, with our lean projects, we've done a couple of really cool interactive experiences this year. So the first, the Bob McDowell Memorial Railway is up and running. So you can now come and get railroad rides. It's not an everyday thing. It's a special occurrence, but this is something that we now offer at Gray Roots, which has been phenomenal. We had 250 riders in the first event, another 100 in the following, and I think the last one was about 175. So when you see photos of it, it holds two little cars, basically an adult and two kids. So you can imagine how many rides is going around to get that many people on that train. But the village lean assessment really demonstrated what we can do when we look at things differently. So we took the opportunity in 2024 to look at where the village operations were, what we could do with the volunteers and the staffing that we had and really rethink what it was going to look like. And it was all new this year. So we now have guided village tours. We have historic demonstrations every day. We were still open seven days a week, still the same hours. And then we reduced our volunteer shifts from two to one. So that way we weren't trying to constantly look and look and not be able to open buildings. So it was a better experience for volunteers, a better experience for our students and a better experience for our visitors because everybody got to find something that they were passionate about and get involved in. And the numbers speak for themselves. So in the first four weeks of Morrison, and we'll have better numbers by the end of the summer, we had 85 demonstrations and 2,407 people came to participate in those. 51% of those observers actually got hands-on engaged with the demonstrations that were happening. Our students offered 42 personalized tours and they hosted 197 participants. Our students offered 42 personalized tours and they hosted 197 participants in those first four weeks, including one tour fully in French. With the volunteer shifts, our buildings were filled and all buildings have been open daily 92% of the time. So these are numbers we just haven't seen in Heritage Village. And I think it speaks a lot to everybody coming together to find a new way forward, which was phenomenal. And we're going to continue that next year. So they started debriefing yesterday and the volunteer meeting is coming up next month. Last but certainly certainly not least, we talked about roundtable sector trends and challenges. So downtown, so it's a key component of that conversation tying back to our Owen Sound Gather video. But we also talked about the mentality of we and the fact that in Gray County, we really are a we can. We do things together. It's not I. We're not competing with one another. We really are coming to the table as a collective and saying we can do things beyond what we think we can do. So that was a real conversation that we're proud of, something that we want to maintain and continue. But it was a great way to end the PDUAC meeting. So any questions, please let me know.
Great, thank you. So we'll put it out there. If there are any members that have any questions for Director Myers or comments. Indeed, there is a lot of energy in the room when everyone comes together like that and they're able to share what's going on across our county. Thank you. Well, with that, then, I see no further questions on this matter. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so next we're going to go to the Agricultural Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes of September 3rd. And Director Taylor is going to speak to that. Now, I just want to caution everyone, lunch is not until noon, so he is not speaking just before lunch. We will have a little bit more business after that. Oh, and let me just get the motion on the floor for you, Director Taylor. So it's recommended that the Agricultural Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes dated September 3rd, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. Number one, that report P D R A A C fifty six twenty five is received. And number two, that staff consider any further feedback received from the Agricultural Advisory Committee with respect to the county's nuisance beaver and coyote slash wolf bylaw reviews. And I know that Director Taylor will be speaking to that, so I'll look for a mover and a secondary to get it on the floor. Moved by Counselor Dobrine, seconded by Counselor Eccles. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director Taylor.
Great, thanks, Madam Warden and members of council. There was a lot of excitement at the Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting, too. I'll probably just present it in a slightly more monotone tone than Savannah did, but I'll do my best here to bring the excitement from the room. The first matter on the agenda was a report by Sarah Johnson, the county's Trails and Forestry Coordinator, with respect to, as the warden mentioned, the the updates on on the the review of the beaver and coyote wolf bylaws. So as council may recall, we did have an open house at Agricultural Services in late April on this topic. And we also had a public meeting in these council chambers and in a hybrid fashion in in early May with respect to the bylaws. A number of of members at County Council were able to attend that that public meeting. And we just wanted to provide a further update to both council and and the Agricultural Advisory Committee with respect to the feedback we heard, not only at that meeting, but also in written form after the fact. I think if you attended the the public meeting, a lot of the comments were relatively well one-sided. We heard a lot of really good comments from from people in the trapping community and people in the farm community. We heard comments about streamlining some of the processes under the bylaw to to, under the bylaws plural, whether the beaver or the coyote, to make claims. We heard comments about licensed trappers and and their ability to control populations in a humane way, which reduces the potential for starvation or disease. We heard topics about the the population of both coyotes and beavers across the county. And anecdotally, those numbers remain at very high levels. Certainly from the farm community, we heard that landowners need to be able to protect their property and livestock. And to a lesser extent, we also heard that with respect to flooding impacts related to beaver dams. We did hear about the impact on on both infrastructure from flooding and and farmlands. We heard about the financial and mental mental health toll it takes on farmers when there is a livestock attack or kill in that regard. And and that's not to be underestimated. In in the public meeting, there was some some very from the heart comments that that came on that mental health impact, which was which was really interesting. We heard about the need for refinements to the programs and particularly on on the coyote and wolf side, when there's been a kill and and there's no remains of the livestock and and the ability to still potentially present a claim if if there's no remains to be verified. And then we also heard some comments with respect to considerations for municipalities to update their own municipal bylaws regarding guardian dogs and hunting animals. And so then after the public meeting, we still had a significant comment period where people could could submit comments in writing. And Sarah also received some phone calls on this. And 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 there were some counterpoints to some of the the comments we heard at the public meetings. In fact, from some people, we heard that when there are strains on a population, so strains with respect to either beavers or coyotes, it can in fact lead to higher birth rates and and therefore having a counter effect on on or the opposite effect on controlling populations. We heard that the comments about the county should should further explore non-lethal control methods with respect to fencing in in the case of of coyotes, beaver baffles with respect to to protecting infrastructure in that regard and also guardian animals. We heard comments about the current bylaws being barbaric in nature, particularly with respect to removing the ears and tails with respect to needing to make a claim. And then we also heard comments about the term nuisance animals is a very subjective term and and maybe not one appreciated by some. The one thing we heard from from folks on both sides of of the debate, if you will, is the need for more education. So perhaps there's the need for more education on non-lethal control methods. And in the farm sector, we also heard the comments about the need for more and for more education on here's why we are hiring trappers to control these and 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 here's the impacts on on farmers livelihoods and 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 operations in that regard. As part of this work, the county also reached out to Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry Staff, who who didn't have significant comments on the matter, other note, other than noting that the county shouldn't restrict landowners from protecting their properties. And we made this clear on September the 3rd with the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And I just want to put a fine point on it here that regardless of what happens with with council's future considerations with respect to the bylaws, either to refine them and and pass new bylaws or or to perhaps discontinue the bylaws, there's nothing in the staff recommendations at this stage that would impact landowners, whether they be farmers or non-farmers' ability to to lawfully protect their properties with respect to to trapping animals in that regard. One of the other comments we heard after the public meeting was actually a request for further consultation from the Saugina-Jibway Nation. So we've had an initial meeting with Saugina-Jibway Nation Environment Office staff in this regard. But this is something we'd like to explore further further with their team. And so as part of the report that went to Agricultural Advisory Committee, we also opened up the floor and and we're eager to hear more comments from the committee. Many, many of the members of that committee have significant lived experience with respect to to coyotes and and beavers in that regard. So we were really happy to hear the the comments that were shared. With respect to some of the comments that were shared by the committee, there was definitely echoed calls for for more education in that regard. And and that's something, again, regardless of what happens with these bylaws, I think county staff would be interested in exploring further and and looking to collaborate with farmers and trappers and and others on in that regard. We heard reiterated calls that the compensation to trappers hasn't been increased over the years and therefore it's not reflecting their their the cost of doing business for them in that regard with respect to the equipment or with respect to mileage and and various other things. We heard from farmers that that in many cases trapping is an absolutely last resort. Farmers have invested a significant amount of resources in securing their properties, whether they be fences. And there was talk of some of the fencing that's used around some of our orchard properties. But there's also talk about very costly electric fencing in that regard with respect to keeping their livestock safe in that regard. And so trapping is is sort of the last resort. We heard comments about the fact that that the the proliferation of some of these animals might be as a result of significant loss of natural habitat across the county. As we do see more development across the county and as we do see additional lands cleared for farming or resource use in that regard. We heard comments from committee members noting that even guardian dogs can be hit or miss and and different farmers have had success or not with respect to using guardian dogs as as a means by which to protect livestock. We we heard that the number of nuisance animals does not appear to be waning, even though these bylaws and and bounties, if you will, have been been in effect for for quite some time. We also had some questions about the ability to remove dams to prevent flooding and whether or not there was any restrictions from either the Department of Fisheries and Oceans or Conservation Authorities as it pertained to to working in waterways in that regard. And then finally, we heard comments with respect to the fact that coyotes don't just impact livestock. There have been no one pet attacks and kills in that regard. And and thankfully, we haven't seen a human as much human interaction in that regard. But there was the warning that that we need to be cautious there. So with respect to next steps on this project, staff noted that based on the comments we've heard, we need to do some further research. We need to do some some further consideration here. As I noted, we'll we'll sit down further with a number of parties, including the Saugina-Jibway Nation, and and really try to come up with a balanced recommendation that can be brought to council at a later date with respect to these bylaws. At this stage, I don't have a date for you for when when that could be brought back. And then the next main item on the agenda was was what many people would consider their favorite part of the Agricultural Advisory Committee agendas, and that's the roundtable discussion. And 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 there's always good comments shared and insights from from our diverse spectrum of participants in that regard. There were some initial comments made with respect to the impact of of weather on on farmers and and farming this this most recent growing season. Some noted that it had been near drought-like conditions and it was very impactful. Others noted where they were in the county or just across the line in Bruce County, it they weren't hit as hard. But one of the takeaways there from staff was that where there are administrative processes needed, approvals at either the county or municipal level, there there needs to be some expedience, the expediency there with respect to enabling for farmers to be able to rack quickly and 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 do what's best for their their crops and livestock in that regard. There was a bit of a celebration with respect to the recent tax reduction on craft cider makers. And it was noted that Craft Cider Week is coming up very soon. Town of Blue Mountains and the municipality of Meaford shared that their open fields, their collaborative open fields event is coming back on September 27th. We did have some questions from the committee on rural severance policies, rural property standards bylaws, and whether or not the county had any drone policies in place. And then similar to our our news and celebrations section from this morning at County Council, we also heard that we're in the thick of fall fair season. So there was lots of good comments about fall fairs and and noting that it's a great way to get out and connect with agriculture and to celebrate agriculture in that regard. And then finally, Chair Smith invited the county to or invited the committee to suggest any additional topics they'd like to hear more about for the coming December 10th Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting. So that's my summary, but certainly happy to take any questions if there are any, Madam Morgan.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I think you gave us some good details there. Thank you very much, Director Taylor. I'll ask a question then. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. That allows us to move on to item seven C. It's recommended that the 2026 Response Time Performance Plan, as outlined in the report, P S R C W oh five twenty five be approved and submitted to the Ministry of Health. May ask for a mover. Moved by Counselor McKay and seconded by Counselor Pringle. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director McNabb.
Morning, Warden County Council. Just bring up the presentation. Hey, we're in business. Good morning, Warden County Council. Today, here to talk to you about the 2026 Response Time Plan. So the the 2026 Response Time Performance Plan is outlined in the report. P S R C W zero five twenty five be approved and submitted to the Ministry of Health. Each year, we develop a plan and it's for the upcoming year. And we are to submit that to the ministry prior to the end of October. That plan is measured the following year and we report those numbers to the Ministry of Health in by by the end of March of the of the following year. The plan itself was developed back in 2012 based upon what we were meeting at that time for response time targets. Since that time, I believe around 2016, we did improve upon those targets. C task one was eight minutes at at 50%. We've actually made that to 60% at that time. And our C task three to five was a 30 minutes and reduced that to 20 minutes. And those targets have been been in place. The plan itself revolves around C task levels, conditions of the patient. There's five of them for calls that a dispatch code for. So the targets, the first one being how quickly we get a defibrillator to the side of a patient or a cardiac arrest within six minutes. Or C task one calls, which are like your unconscious patients, what we call obvious immediate threats within eight minutes for C task ones. These two categories for the whole county for the year of 2024 was just over 200 calls. So not a very large amount of calls in that area. The C task two, three, four and five criteria. This is something that the county can set the target and the time. And so we actually set the target at 15 minutes, 90% of the time for C task two. And then C task three, four and five, which are more less severe emergency calls, that's 20 minutes, 90% of the time. We we use the 90% marker because it really does give the indicator of what normative expectation of a paramedic service would be if you call. Nine times out of 10, when we say that we're we're there within 15 minutes and 35 seconds, we can truly say that that's the way it happens. So this is the results and we presented this back in last March when we submitted to the ministries. We met all the targets at that time. And then you can see from the five-year average that we've been pretty consistent throughout that time. The last couple of years, we've met all the targets, which is good. We have struggled in the past with our C task two with 15 minutes. But the last couple of years, we've been able to meet all those targets. Another way of looking at calls other than through C task is by your 90 percentile for all code fours brought together. And this is something we keep a close eye on. We try to keep this. Well, obviously, we try to go as quickly as we can, but this has been a something a guiding post for us is around 15 minutes. You can see till June 30th this year, we're similar to last year at 1535. Traditionally, this will get better through the year unless December's really snowy. But generally, better weather will 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 build up, improve upon that time, one forward. But 2024 was 1526 for the whole year. The average response time, we do monitor this. Again, these aren't requirements, but stuff we watch. And it doesn't really give the public really good indicator because you have 20-minute response time and lots of two-minute response times. But it does give you a feel, you know, is your response times going up per call? Are they going down? And you can see within four seconds, they're holding. So these are the recommended response times, no changes for next year, as long as council approves. Just as far as call volume, we continue to see call volume going up yearly. Last year was a 4.23% increase. And this year, when we looked at the call volume, it's up over 8%. When you look at the la- the last five years, I believe in the spring, it was 5.9% per year, just over 30% in the last five years. And if you look at the ORH modeling that they did, they predicted it to be 5.8. So I'm pretty accurate so far. Again, what you have mixed in there, you have years that are high and years that are low. But you can't just look at one year at a time. You probably have to look at a three to five window. The idea being though is that with that ORH plan, that we continue to meet these response time targets and, you know, plan for the increased call volume yearly. This year has been a big year for us. We migrated from electronic medical record that we've been with for 15 years to a new platform. We went from a product called ESO, which at one time was called Interdev, and to a new software provider called Prehoss, both well-renowned service providers in this space. But just with the transition in April, until now, we still are having some complications with bringing the data together to to report on those response times. And also with the new provider, bringing in a location of calls to be able to to get in the outside responding municipalities into the county. Because not only are we measured by our response time within the county, it's all calls within the county. So if Wellington or Bruce comes in, those have to be included. Now, we're very close on that data. Like I would say, it won't be long before we get it. Now, we're very close on that data. Like I would say, it won't be long before we get it resolved, but we just couldn't get it done in time for the report. There, there's nothing in regards to reporting to the ministry that we have to have it, but it's just something we'd like to provide. Like a mid-year number. I usually build it to give you that to June thirtieth, but uh, this year just wasn't able to get it done. Um, there will be some changes coming up uh, in paramedic services around uh, uh, um, um, dispatching of calls. And uh, and also response time standards. Um, but uh, I just had of that one thing that we're gonna ask for consideration of in the twenty twenty six budget. Is the ability to go back to do uh, more more or less a uh, update to the comprehensive deployment review. Uh, the data that we looked at uh, originally through ORH was till May of twenty twenty two. They went back five years and because of COVID, they even went back another five years just to make sure there wasn't anything uh, incorrect in the data. But since that time, we will, i- if may have next year. Will four years of data and also four years of uh, growth data. And uh, also we'll build a measure those three twelve hour cars that have been added uh, since the start. With uh, with the the upcoming two more cars coming in 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 twenty twenty seven and then another car down the road. We'd like to be able to look at it and see if we're on the right trajectory. Um, and see if uh, these uh, the 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 original recommendations uh, still uh. Uh, do we need more or less resources uh, to be able to meet those demands as we go forward? The other thing, and I'll talk about it here soon, is the uh, what we would do with this with ORH, uh, there is a. Most likely a change come to the response time standards, and uh, we would work that in there as well to make sure we're on the right path. So a couple of new things happening in uh, paramedic services that are fairly large. Uh, is one is the uh, it's called Medical Priority Dispatch System, MPDS. This system is a world renowned uh, credited uh, evidence-based uh, triage tool that they use at dispatch. And it breaks it down into uh, five criteria for emergency calls uh, instead of right now two. Uh, this is something that's moving across the province to all dispatch centers. Uh, Simco went within the last year. Uh, Cambridge CAC was uh, services Wellington, Waterloo, Dufferin. They're actually going right now. Mississauga has moved over Ottawa. Uh, Niagara and Toronto have always been on it. Um, and London will go next October. So this uh, new program uh, will help uh, better triage calls. I look forward to it. Uh, it really looks after the high priority emergency calls really well. Um, for instance, if you've had a cardiac arrest. And a and a for first on the first day, the first call come in, somebody's short of breath, they were vomited. And then a cardiac arrest came in. Today, they're both a code four call. The thing is, is they they can identify an obvious immediate threat like a cardiac arrest, so they couldn't redirect that first ambulance. So what would happen is the the first ambulance going to the shorter breath, which would be a lesser priority, but still a code four. Would would have to carry on in the in the system we're in today. In the MPDS system, what happens is is they're able to blend these higher priority calls and say. Cardiac arrest can trump that other one. So one, they they put it to colors. Purple is your highest. They would actually make that a purple and the other one would be a red, so it would supersede it. So I look forward to that type of delineation of calls. And then there's also the ability on the lower end to better triage calls. Or uh, alternate pathways as the system grows. You know, what is alternate pathways instead of maybe taking people to the hospital? Maybe there's other avenues through community paramedicine or other community resources as far as transport. Now, we're in the early days of that, but that's kind of where the system would go. With that also, uh, because of the change in MPDS, uh, the province is uh, moving forward with a new response time standard. Uh, that'll most likely be released next year. I don't have the timeframe yet. Um, I wa- I was actually fortunate to be on the committee uh, as they were developing those. And uh, but we haven't seen it officially yet, but we just from our association and a meeting just in our zone this uh, past week. Uh, they they still say it'll be happening next year. Uh, it'll go away from the C task response time standards. They'll go back more to the dispatch priority. So your. Code four, red, red, purple, reported up to the ministry. Um, so with that, uh, with that ORH, we we, if that's the case at that time, we'll have the right information, we'll be able to use that. Uh, um, direction to ensure we are on the right path. The thing is, when we when we worked with ORH, we really did focus on the eight, ten, and fifteen minute responses, eight minutes for. For urban and fifteen minutes for rural. So I I believe we are on a solid path for response times. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. We'll put it out for any questions for Director McNabb or comments. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Um, thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. It's always really interesting to see those numbers. I think in the past I've asked a question similar. Um, you know, with it appears at least like we've got the really low hanging fruit. And we're working our way up the tree, so to speak, in terms of how do we? Get those times down? How do we get those response rates up? And it sounds like the new system that you're talking about that will happen in uh, next October in London. Was it next October or this? Next October. Um, but. Is it still geography that is really? Hanging those numbers where they are or making them steady where they are, or is there something else? That we can do to try to, short of putting more cars on the road, of course. Is there something else we can be doing or looking at to re- reduce those response times?
I would say the approach that we took is probably about the best approach we could take in in rural Ontario. Forty five hundred square kilometers, distance is an issue. But it also is volume, like each year our volume goes up and we do have concentrated centers. So uh, if you look at the new response time standard, they'll actually have standards for urban and rural and remote. We will have a couple by the looks of it, uh, urban Hanover and Owen Sound and the rest will be rural. But barring all those numbers, I thi- I think it's a balance, you know? If you live out in the country and it takes you fifteen minutes to get milk, you probably understand that it takes you fifteen minutes to get an ambulance or close to it. But we can't have it twenty five or thirty because we don't have enough cars. And try to uh, uh, position ambulances as best we can to to make up that area. So if you look at the work that ORH did, you know, we know Hanover and Owen Sound are our most concentrated municipalities. They were the first ones to get an increased car. And uh, then they know Aton will be built, it'll still protect that area. We would try to push it out into the more rural areas. But then uh, the next um, uh, car is in Fever Jam. There, there, there's not a ton of calls out there, but it's a huge area. So what we're trying to do is balance out the difference between, you know. Your most bang for your buck is to put them all in your most urban spot, but the thing is you gotta balance that out to have a a a, you know, a fair response time for the rural area too. So it's trying to. I guess the ORH called it the morality of response times. That's what we try to do.
Just real quickly, uh, I I do want to say that I appreciate all the work that Kevin and his team do. They do a tremendous job for the county. And uh, I. In no means meant any criticism. I I do appreciate all the good work that you do and your team for sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll look around and we'll go to Counselor Arcles next.
Uh, thank you. I guess just in the numbers, um. The one that stands out is in that uh, first category, the sudden cataract, cardiac cataract, cardiac arrest. Um. No, no responses in Chatsworth and Southgate. But the other two that kind of jump out is that Blue Mountains, Georgia, Georgian Bluffs and and Gray Highlands are at zero. Does that mean that? We didn't meet that on any of that? That's zero percent? And I guess further to, you know, is it geography? Is it just bad roads and we can't get there in those municipalities or? I, you know, how is it that? Yeah, ninety percent in the urban areas, but in our other, you know, West Gray were forty percent, give or take. We got there. But in those three, it's zero. And I, yeah. Just that stands out, just doesn't seem to make sense. Why we couldn't have done it at least once anyways? To get ten percent, but it's a zero?
So this would be a major- majority would be uh, geography. If you look at a six minute response time, the response time is the time from it, the pager goes off till we arrive soon. So if you add in a minute to two minutes of shoot time to get in truck, find out where you're going. Your drive time is uh, you know, four, four and a half minutes, maybe five minutes. If you find out where you're going within a minute and you're going. If if you, if you look at West Gray, the the vast area of it. If the ambulance is in Durham, the ambulance has to most likely respond to a cardiac arrest in Durham. And and these are sudden cardiac arrests. These aren't obvious deaths or traumatic deaths. These are people that could have been viable. That haven't, so the numbers are lower. I believe uh, for twenty twenty four, it was sixty six calls across the county, not not a lot of calls. If you look at the numbers in Hanover and and Old Sound. Like you'll see those percentages higher because they are isolated to a large center. Like so, so everything seems like escalated, but but if you look at the size of Gray Highlands or Southgate or West Gray. Like unless those are happening like in the in the town of Dundalk or in the town of Durham. Uh, tho- those calls, the likelihood, we did a presentation probably. Well, it was when I was in this role, so probably six years ago. We actually mapped out around a town of what realistically from a base, we could meet that target in, and it was a good. Way to tell the story of like, it really is a distance issue. Um, and and I know those numbers are low. They don't look great, but like that six minutes in rural Ontario is hard to meet.
If I could, but in the town of the blue, there's a a fairly large concentration and we have a car right there. But it's still at zero. I guess, you know, we built that there to have that response. You know, it just shows up as something being weird. Uh, you know, did all the heart attacks happen in Urbana? That far away from. It just, you know, I I get it, yeah, Durham, Hanover, you know, in those urban areas. That's a vast number of people. That's where it's gonna be. But we invested in the Blue Mountains to have that there. And it still shows up as zero in that sudden cardiac. I. Strange.
The Blue Mountains, it's set right at the village and that is a fairly concentrated spot. And if you look at uh, even the ORH people healthier in that area and stuff like, I'm not saying that's the case here, but. Um, Blue Mountains is a large spot, like we're definitely not making that response time in Thornbury. I guess not, it won't happen. Like when we get the Thornbury car, that anything that happens there, we would make it in that area. So. Like if it's not happening right in that, in that core, um, sudden cardiac arrest, we won't make it. And uh, and it depends on the year. Some years are better than others. This is a year that they didn't meet in. And typically, it it's where the call took place. And uh, like, i- if if it's within that range, we will get there. Just if it's outside the range, we won't. Or the worst case scenario, we back to the dispatch. Tool, if we're on another call, we're assigned to that call and the cardiac arrest comes in right after it. Then we are on that call that may not be, we call them obvious immediate threats. Choking cardiac arrest, unconscious. Now we'll be able to respond off of those other calls, even though they potentially could be life threatening. We already know there is a real life threat and they'll be able to take us off and assign it.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go to Counselor Greg next.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I would just note, we actually don't see the. Exact number of calls that came in. So I mean, if there was only one call and you don't make it once, then I'll give you a zero percent. Um, there is uh, in the charts, uh, it does look like uh. Despite the fact that your call volume is certainly increasing, that you have the capacity to try to um. Respond to the new dispatch um, ranking or prioritization, which is is good to see. You're hitting a hundred percent. In a lot of the the C task four and five in most of the communities, so that's great to see. Uh, and hopefully this dispatch um. Initiative is rewarding. I do have one question. This is something from personal experience, Kevin. Uh, in the last year, I made a call uh, for paramedic um, assistance uh, to an individual who who needed such. And I was asked by dispatch, uh, what are your needs? And my response was, I just need an ambulance. Uh, they were arrived. Incredibly properly, uh, and then thirty seconds, a minute later, along comes the city fire truck. And I didn't ask for the city fire truck. It's not an egregious cost to the taxpayer because it is a full-time department to respond, but it is still a soft cost. And if that was a rural municipality dealing with volunteer call-ins or so forth. It would be uh, a more significant uh, response when it wasn't asked for. This new dispatch um, system, does it respond or listen to that type of experience from from individuals where? Um, resources are valuable. And at times we don't want to um, utilize resources that are expensive. If if they're not necessary. So just wondering the changes in the dispatch, does it respond to that type of an instance too?
When, when a public member calls in, you know, we hear this and uh, you know, public will say, I didn't ask for the fire department, didn't ask for the police, but. That that is, uh, those decisions are made by very scriptive processes. It's a computer-aided dispatch system, what question you answer next, what resources to send. And then based upon where that call is uh, categorized. There's different categories that uh, trigger tiered response. So there's no real, there's no way to override it. Um, so even if somebody says, well, I don't need this, even if I call and say I don't need it, like I'd be pretty. Like myself, like if I was in my supervisor vehicle and I was working, but even myself as a public member, it won't happen. Um, to send PDS, uh, I have not drove into the tiered response, but I know there's a lot of work to do in uh, MPDS around tiered response. Uh, so what that looks like, if there's gonna be more choices for them to go to and not go to, that's something. Uh, we do leave tiered response, uh, what what call criteria they go to, uh, up to um. The fire departments themselves, that really is a fire, uh, uh, that's their choice guided by their councils. Um, but we, I think we have settled on uh, a pretty good response. For uh, um, especially our our uh, our part-time fire departments as well. It was a bit of a difference. Is that they're mostly just going to what we call the obvious immediate threats. So unconscious cardiac arrest, respiratory arrest, car accidents, industrial accidents. One sound goes to a bit more, you know, full-time fire department. But again, a lot of that is up to the fire department themselves, but uh, I would say, and we're also doing a lot of work to align tiered response agreements to prevent errors. Uh, so that we, you know, kind of. If you're, if you're, the tier response in West Gray would be similar to what Hanover is. And again, back to, there's no sense rolling a fire department to a chest pain call. They're taking people out of work. The ambulance can handle it quite well. If there are issues of as far as extrication, we can make that call when we get there. But uh, for a cardiac arrest, you don't want to have to wait till you get there to call. Because by the time somebody you're transporting, you may or may not be gone by the time you get there.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go over to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warren. Just following up with Counselor Greg's comments about resources. I've heard just recently of the last Labor Day weekend of an individual that passed, a long weekend. The family tried desperately to reach the coroner or whoever pronounces people sees. Couldn't get any calls, ended up calling nine one one. OPP, fire and and ambulance showed up. It was, it was pretty evident the person had passed, but it it couldn't. So again, the point is, is all showed up, but is that a normal? I I know it was a long weekend and maybe people aren't being able to be reached, but it just seemed very excessive for somebody that already definitely passed to a point where. They were long past. I don't want to get into any details because it's a, but it was just, I was shared that experience.
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying, the common sense to that, but uh, on the other side of it is, is those decisions made by like untrained providers. Potentially that person someday could be viable. We even see it sometimes with car accidents. They say, well, fire's not needed. Then uh, if they're not called, we get there and and it takes us fifteen minutes to drive there, then they're trapped. We can't get them out. So now we're waiting another fifteen minutes. Now we're thirty minutes. It it's those things about. Like no, no system is perfect. Uh, when when there is a potential for life, that's where we, you know, sometimes resources roll and we don't need them. We try to cancel them as quick as we can, but. In those settings where potential to save a life, then that's where we send resources and cancel them off.
Uh, appreciate uh, all the questions and and comments from from uh, counselors and uh. And and Kevin's response has been spot on in terms of some of the challenges. some of the challenges that our our paramedics uh, teams face each and every day in terms of the distance that they have to cover. Uh, and and some of the challenges and Nana and I were fortunate enough to do a write, write along with uh, with Kevin and some of his team members and just to see some of the dynamics that they have to to interact with on a on a regular basis. Whether it's uh, you know, some patients are doing some uh, tied up uh, with cars uh, doing transfers to to uh, hospitals well inside of our region. Uh, and how then they shift resources in order to make sure that there's enough resources on 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 hand and ready to to uh, respond as quick as they can. Um, it was, it was really eye-opening experience and uh, I just want to thank Kevin and his team for all that they do each and every day. Um, with respect to that, I think that's where uh, through the deployment review and through some of the improvements that are proposed as part of that in order to respond to the increase um, uh, response. Uh, response that we continue to see each and every year uh, continues to grow based on our population growth and based on our demographics uh, within Gray County. I think it's important to continue on with those. As Kevin noted, we're going to ask uh, for, just to revisit that, just to do a gut check in twenty twenty-six, make sure we're still on the right path based on what we're seeing from a response uh, activity plus a growth perspective. Uh, but uh, the importance of adding some of those additional bases, those additional vehicles, staff enhancements. Uh, I think it's critical in order to continue to to make sure that we're able to respond as quickly as 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 we can. So again, thanks Kevin and his team for all that they do uh, each and every day and uh, and yeah, appreciate.
Okay, thank you. So that does look like that's the end and I'll just verify online. We don't have any hands up. Okay. All right. So thank you both, Director McDavid, and thank you for uh, to the CAO for what you've just added there. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, now um, logistically, we uh, the next presentation may take a bit. Uh, we also have some staff logistics to make sure that they're able to present in time. However, lunch has arrived five minutes ago and it is a hot lunch. So uh, we are going to need to call lunch at this point, but if we can keep ourselves to be back in our seats by quarter two, that would make sure that staff have adequate time to be able to present the material for the next item. Okay, so we'll do that until twelve forty-five, please. Thank you. Okay, welcome back County Council. We are going to continue now and um, I thank uh, um, Senior Planner Hillier and Engineering Manager Irtan for their patience while we needed to break, but you have our fresh full attention at this point in time. So I would like to put it out that we are at item seven D and the recommendation is that report PDR CW fifty-one twenty-five be received and that count the committee supports a request from the Ministry of Transportation to prohibit a future fourth leg extension on lands east of Gray Road Five at the newly proposed intersection of Gray Road Five and the New City Street and New City Street accessing the future site of the Bruce Gray Catholic District School Board Secondary School. And that Gray County maintains the requirement of a ninety kilometer per hour design speed for Gray Road Five in the area of the proposed intersection. So um, there will be a a detailed presentation to follow, but if I can get a mover and a seconder to get that on the floor. Moved by Counselor Dickert, seconded by uh, the Deputy Warden. So it's now on the floor for discussion and uh, welcome Ms. Hillier.
Thank you so much, uh, Warden Matrasov, and good afternoon, County Council and everyone joining us in person or in line today. Uh, so yeah, Trevor and I will be tag teaming this one. So I'm going to start us out and then hand it over to Trevor shortly here. Um, but before we begin, um, as the recommendation in front of you notes, there's, there's two separate items um, that are discussed within the report and that we're going to um, speak to today. So the first one being a request for a resolution that we've received from MTO um, that I'm going to speak to. And the second being um, that our transportation services is looking for some input from council with regards to um, the proposed road design for Gray Road Five as a result of the new school site there. So just as a bit of background, uh, so the county and the city of Owen Sound and and MTO um, have been working alongside the Bruce Gray Catholic District School Board for probably about close to the past two years now. Um, in helping them to identify and prepare a site for a new secondary school in Owen Sound. Uh, so just where, so that we're all on the same page in terms of the location of this site, we've got a map up there. So uh, this is the far eastern boundary of the city of Owen Sound. Uh, so as we can see, uh, it has frontage on Twenty-Eighth Avenue East, uh, which is also Gray Road Five. Um, it's just north of Eighth Street East and south of uh, Highway twenty-one. So if you can imagine where that uh, Van Dolder's business is at the intersection of Highway twenty-one and Twenty-Eighth Avenue East. Uh, the site is just south of there. Uh, it's also bound, uh, also has a uh, western boundary on the county's rail trail. Um, and so uh, over the past couple of years, as as I said, uh, the county has been collaborating with the city and school board and MTO on this project. Uh, the Owens, uh, city of Owens Sound has recently approved a consent application to establish the parcel that the school would be situated on. Uh, they've also recently approved a zoning bylaw amendment uh, to establish the school use. Uh, the city is currently in the works of um, working towards a site plan agreement uh, with the school board. Um, and in terms of timelines for construction, uh, the school board would would ideally like to start uh, some site grading works this fall season uh, with uh, construction to commence during spring twenty twenty-six. So in order to facilitate the construction of the school, uh, this being a new, what we call greenfields development area of the city. Um, some new local road infrastructure is required in this area. Um, and so again, based on sort of a lot of back and forth we've had with the city, it was determined that the best location for this new potential local road would be just north of kind of that 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 site that we're seeing there. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll give you a closer look of what that looks like in a second here. Um, so some of the the uh, conversation that we've had along the situating of this new road um, is that it doesn't conform to the county's separation distance requirements uh, between new intersections or between intersections. Um, and similarly with MTO, it doesn't conform to their intersection separation distance requirements. Um, and so as a result of this, uh, MTO has suggested that they could support the development of this road. Um, but in doing so, they would request that uh, Gray County pass a resolution uh, such that a fourth leg extension um, would not be added to that intersection in the future. So again, I'll explain a little bit more in detail what that looks like in principle. Um, so as part of this work, uh, a a transportation impact study has been prepared by the school board. Um, and as Trevor will speak to, um, Gray County Transportation Services is recommending a road design speed of ninety kilometers per hour here, um, which is different than the direction that's been put forward by the TIS at this stage. So again, just to give us a sense of kind of what that approved school site looks like, uh, there might be some slight variation as the school uh, in the city move towards a site plan agreement process, uh, but this was sort of the diagram that was put forward for the purposes of the zoning application. And so you can see uh, the school there kind of to the right of the screen. Um, that would be situated closer to Gray Road Five or Twenty-Eighth Avenue East. Uh, that future local road uh, B is is just north of the school building there. And so it would be that intersection of that future local road B and the uh, Twenty-Eighth Avenue East that's in question here. So this is a uh, diagram that was provided within the uh, transportation impact study. Uh, so that yellow arrow there, that is just to situate us where this new intersection would be located. And so essentially what MTO has suggested is that the lands to the east there across this road from the school. Um, there, they are recommending that no future access um, be permitted onto those, onto that property. Um, and again, that the county pass a resolution to that effect. So we have had some back and forth discussions with MTO on this matter. Um, and there are some important planning considerations to recognize here. So as noted, this, the the school lands themselves fall within the uh, primary settlement area of the city of Owen Sound, but they do abut the um, settlement area boundary and across the road uh, is where uh, the the line for the municipality of Meaford is. Uh, so lands to the east of Gray Road Five are located within the municipality of Meaford. Those lands are also located within the Niagara Escarpment Plan area, um, which of course doesn't really permit uh, urban development. Um, it's also outside of the defined settlement area boundary. So there are many things that would have to change from a planning policy perspective in order for most forms of development to be viable on the, on the property across the road. Um, having said that, MTO um, would still like us to to pass this resolution. Um, again, if there were a a a development proposal or or, you know, in twenty-five years from now, things were to change. We can certainly have that conversation with MTO again, and and there's, there's many opportunities through that planning process, through that pre-submission process to have those conversations. Um, we did note to MTO that the county is is undertaking quite a thorough process right now of having discussions with lower-tier municipalities um, with regards to the potential transfer of county roads within settlement areas to the lower-tier municipalities. Uh, so in this case, we anticipate that that Gray Road, that section of Gray Road Five would be transferred likely to the city of Owen Sound in future. Um, we did note that, you know, if we were to pass that resolution now, it likely wouldn't be binding on the city. Um, and we, we did discuss, you know, even if we were to support this resolution at this stage, there is the potential in future to redact that resolution if we, if, you know, development did become viable in future and and that's subject to further discussion, of course. Um, so with these things considered, um, at this stage, you know, county are, the county is really looking to support the city and to support the school board and um, making this uh, development of the school site uh, feasible uh, within the next year. And so we are recommending to uh, County Council at this stage uh, to support the request from MTO uh, to develop this resolution. Uh, and I'll just pass it off over to Trevor at this stage to speak about the road design piece.
Good afternoon, County Council. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna, well, thank you Becky again for speaking about the uh, planning uh, side of this uh, development. So what I'm uh, gonna speak about is mostly uh, design related. So it's, it can be probably pretty technical, um, but I'll try to kind of walk through it and make it as easy and straightforward as I can. Uh, so we have a hill that basically just south of the intersection with High Twenty-Sixth, there's a bit of a crest till that um, as you drive over that, the new intersection is going to be in a situation where we don't have sufficient site distance. Um, based on a one hundred kilometer design speed. Uh, and that's typically what we would use on any of our county roads and it's sort of an industry practice uh, to be twenty kilometers over uh, your posted speed. Uh, what we do uh, look at by going through the data, I'll get to that kind of uh, information here shortly. But by reducing to a ninety kilometer design speed, we can accommodate that uh, site distance. Uh, and that really just makes sure that, you know, if a car comes over top of the crest of the hill and you see someone pulling out of the uh, new school, that there's not going to be a situation where they could drive into the side of them. So, um, I can go kids next. So, uh, we completed some traffic counts here in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Uh, and so based on that traffic count information, it supports what we already recognized in that area. Um, what we noticed is that the eighty-fifth percentile speed for that road uh, for the southbound uh, direction, which is really the critical one in this situation uh, is eighty-five kilometers per hour. So what's good about this is this actually lower uh, compared to a lot of our county roads. A lot of our county roads sit around ninety to ninety-two. Uh, so eighty-five uh, does help us in this situation in terms of um, vehicle speeds in the area. Uh, during that two-week, roughly two-week period, we uh, had about twenty-six thousand vehicles recorded. So out of those twenty-six thousand vehicles, we recognize that thirty-two percent of the southbound vehicles were going eighty kilometers per hour or greater. Uh, we also saw that six percent were ninety kilometers per hour. Uh, and most of those peak speeds happened between the hours of three and six P M, which of course is probably a peak period for the school as well with uh, students leaving in the afternoon. Uh, one of the elements, and so on the right here, you can see that we have a histogram for speed. So just to kind of give you an idea of what this chart is showing. Uh, basically for the, each vehicle, uh, so if a vehicle's driving eighty kilometers per hour, it's going to represent one little tick on the bar and the higher the bars up, the blue bars, the more vehicles driving at that speed. So, what's great about this distribution, uh, is it's very uh, symmetrical. Which is a great representation for us because it means that the drivers are driving based on the conditions and um, the speeds or the speed limit that is posted is being followed relatively well. Um, and basically the peak, you can see where the uh, dashed eighty line is, that's relatively where the average speed of vehicles is. So again, a good distribution for us. Um, what we do notice in situations where there are uh, problems, if you basically the distribution will change. So you might see a sharper peak on the left side. Uh, and then as it comes to the top, you'll see a broader distribution and it's more of a tapered outside on the uh, higher speed section. And what that means is that there's a lot of speed disparity. And what speed disparity means is you'll have vehicles maybe going sixty versus vehicles going eighty. And then you get uh, wider ranges of that traffic. And for that, us, for us, that's a concern because what happens is it causes uh, angry driving um, basically more potential for poor decision-making from drivers. So. We have had the request uh, from both the school board and the city to look at a sixty kilometer zone here. Um, so we typically, when we do speed limit analysis, we use the Transportation Association of Canada's uh, speed limit guidelines. And what that is, is basically it's a a form that has a number of different uh, elements to it that you fill in, different criteria. So a lot of them here are listed like roadside geometry, um, various hazards. Uh, number of intersections and entrances along the stretch of roadway. Uh, also pedestrian and cyclist activity, uh, items like that. So you measure those criteria and then basically the output of the uh, rubric will come up with a suggested posted speed. So in this situation, what we determined was that the roadside conditions generate a ninety kilometer design speed. Uh, but based on policy, uh, it recommends an eighty kilometer design speed. And that's largely based on the fact that we don't generally use ninety kilometer roads in Gray County. So uh, a lot of it's driven by that is our kind of general maximum speed. So. We've also um, reviewed a lot of kind of international, there's basically a report that was done in Sweden that looked at, I believe was just shy of thirty thousand kilometers of roadway. Uh, where they did either speed reductions or speed reduc- or speed uh, increases on those roadway and then generate basically recorded what the effect of the change was. So where this comes into play, this was strictly looking at if you just take an eighty kilometer per hour road and drop it to seventy and that's the only change you make. What is the impact on drivers for that? And what they found, uh, they had seventeen hundred kilometers that were uh, reduced. And in that, they found that the average driver's speed for every ten kilometers reduced only dropped by about two to three. Uh, basically, what we found as well, when we do a speed reduction or a speed increase in the county, we'll put counters out before and after that change to record those as well, basically create a similar process as this study. And we've found through, predominantly through most of those um, studies are basically what we see supports that claim that they found in the uh, study. So um, I think of some of the ones like in Dundalk where we've dropped from fifty to forty, we'd see the average speed in Dundalk dropped about three or four kilometers per hour. So again, it kind of follows that same uh, process. So in this case, by dropping to a sixty kilometer per hour, we could potentially see approximately about an eighty kilometer, uh, eighty-fifth percentile speed. And what that means with the eighty-fifth percentile, it basically means that fifteen percent of the vehicles will now be going over eighty. Uh, and before, when we mentioned six percent, we're over ninety, we would likely see a reduction on that as well. So what that really does is if we end up designing the road to a ninety kilometers design speed, well, basically, if conditions stay the same and we remain posted, we're seeing we'll basically, if conditions stay the same and we remain posted, we're seeing roughly six percent of vehicles that could be in a potential situation where they're going too fast, which doesn't really fall outside of the realm of really any of our routes. There's typically always that vast set of drivers that are just in that data set and exceed those ranges. Where we would see, so if we did drop to sixty and we did adjust that down, again, that would help us in that sense, but it also puts us more into the situation of creating bigger speed disparity and creating a higher risk in terms of collisions and incidents due to that bigger speed disparity. And there's numerous numerous reports and studies that also support that realm. And the issue there, because the bulk of your traffic is in that range, the risk of any sort of incident is far greater than kind of the low end of the upper speed vehicles when you have a nice standard deviation. So we found that basically, in our opinion, the risk associated with that doesn't outweigh the benefits gained by dropping the speed in this situation. What also tends to happen here, because the conditions of the road aren't really changing, even with the school development being built, it will be offset from the road. So from a visual perspective for drivers, there's not a huge amount of cues or anything that's going to change. So again, creating that disparity in vehicle speeds, we may see more, you know, poor decisions around passing or just issues that we don't really want when there could be potential for maybe students standing at the side of the road on their break. So one of the main restrictions with the, and why we've essentially come to the point where we would go to a ninety or accept a ninety kilometer design speed is largely due to two high pressure gas mains that are in the west shoulder of the road. Relocation, if we were to go to a hundred kilometer design speed, which would be ideal, the gas pipelines would be at an insignificant depth and we'd require replacement or sorry relocation, which would be very considerable costs in conversations with the gas companies. So they're very limiting in that sense. What we can do, they are deep enough, and we've done some borehole, or the school board's done borehole data to support that. They are deep enough that they could still get away with building a road at a ninety kilometer design speed, although there is constraints that they'd have to work around, which are not out of the ordinary with gas mains, but they do come with some costs and some additional timing in order to accommodate it. But again, it's really just not vibrating around the gas mains, no heavy equipment directly on them. Items that many contractors are aware of and deal with on many projects through our county and province itself. So by utilizing a ninety kilometer design speed, we can make sure that we have sufficient stopping site distance for those vehicles, greatly reducing the potential for risks or collisions. In my professional opinion, I, with the reduction down, if it went to an eighty, we'd be putting ourselves in a pretty risky situation, mostly because right now, we're seeing about thirty three percent, even with the reduction, we're still seeing fifteen, and that's if everything kind of happens as it is. So those sort of numbers start to get up there. If you're saying fifteen percent of your vehicles coming over the crest of the hill could be in a potential situation for an accident, it is risky. So that's why we're suggesting the ninety kilometer design speed. We can do those, protect the gas mains without relocation. And then again, as I've talked about, usually it's issues with the speed disparity and going to a sixty kilometer course posted, it does add additional risk for a different type of collision. Again, with that, as development occurs out there, there's potential for some commercial and residential over time. Once those developments start to occur, you'll see a lot more visual cues for drivers that will help to reduce their speeds naturally. Again, we'll monitor the development and as it progresses to make sure that if speeds are starting to come down, we can make those adjustments a lot easier without creating a large disparity. We would, we would progress with that and reduce the speed at that time. And yeah, so county staff recommends a design speed of ninety kilometers per hour and that the school board continues to address the hill and the gas mains. And yeah, so I don't know if there's any questions, but here we can take them now.
Okay, so let's see if there are questions for either, and I'll open it up to the county floor and just need to see the virtual attendees. We'll begin with Counselor Greg.
I have one question. Thanks, Trevor and Becky. The exact location of your speed assessment equipment, where was it located? Was it located exactly and specific to the intersection that's in question? Or were you further south because the the commentary in the report speaks to southerly traffic movements that you are accumulating that speed data from? So I'm just wondering, are you specific to that exact intersection?
Yeah, through you, Warden. Yes, so we placed the counter, I believe there's a hydro pole just north of where the proposed intersection is, and it was basically facing south. So where the detection was actually occurring is within a few meters of where the proposed intersection is.
And when you say facing south, you were getting speed data for vehicles going south? Or going north with, okay, you're collecting both directions, okay.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, Trevor and Becky, as well. A school safety zone. Typically, what sort of speed limit would you have in a in a school safety zone, sixty kilometers typically?
It, there really is no defined rules against speed limits within safety zones. So predominantly, they occur in areas because most of the schools are in areas where there's some residential development. So there is lower speed limits naturally. However, there's community safety zone, for instance, on Highway ten at the Hall and Chasper School that's in an eight. So there really is no hard fast rule around that, but.
So I'm just thinking, further down the road, once the school is there and established, the stretcher road to the south is sixty kilometers. Would it not make a lot more sense to make that chunk in front of the school sixty kilometers now and be done with it? And make it consistent rather than up and then down and then up again, once you get further down on whatever that road number is? And try to avoid the cost cutting that hill down and and potential impacts to the gas line.
Yeah, so effectively, there's two different, there's two instances here, so posted speed and design speed, although they relate to one another, they are different. The posted speed could be reduced. We do see the potential for the risk of the larger differences in speed. Now, again, as you mentioned, it is sixty to the south, and then Gray Road five, as it goes to the hospital, is also eighty. So depending on, and again, the piece to the south is kind of outside of our jurisdiction. So I'm not sure the exact reasoning why it's a sixty, that's not for us to decide. So I, at least from what I understand, it's from the intersection at Superior Street is what I've been told. So again, the piece north of Superior Street, whether that is also a sixty or not, it'd be potentially divided. But again, yes, you can reduce the speed. We do see there is risk with the largest, the bulk of the vehicles that would be traveling potentially now you put yourself at risk of having vehicles that follow the hard fast rule of driving sixty, and then there's people that still drive eighty or eighty five. You know, they can come up on each other quicker, you create just more instance for concern. Now, in terms of design speed, that's a different thing, it's strictly a measure of stopping site distance. So the concern there is any vehicle that does exceed eighty is going to be a potential for an incident. So even if you reduce to sixty and you still see twenty five percent of your vehicles going above eighty versus maybe five percent above ninety, there's a significant difference in that. So from our opinion, it makes more sense to, or designed based on the ninety to avoid that risky situation.
Next, we're going to go to Counselor Body, and then we'll go to Counselor McQueen. Oh, sorry, Counselor Echols, I believe you are next. So you go next, then I'll go over to Counselor Body and then over to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, and I guess that was what's the precedent? I mean, Sullivan School. We've got them, any place you have a school, and you said the Holland School, there's a couple more out there that they can think of that are right there. Yeah, I I don't know why we're debating because before the school doors open, there's going to be, I don't know how many come in here saying, oh, well, this is now got to be a community safety zone, all of that. Because it's a school area. I can take you to one in Kitchener, I'd be riding in a car when somebody got picked up there. I was riding, I wasn't driving. I, I get it for the sightlines, building it to the ninety kilometers zone, but I just, I can't support that we're not going to put it at sixty, do the construction. Because when you're doing the construction, it's going to be reduced. Right? So start it up, it's sixty. And we won't be back here spending a whole lot of time arguing back and forth, up and down. Build it to the ninetieth, yeah, to get those sightlines coming up, because there is a set of stoplights at the end there, right? Yeah, it, I I'm just baffled. As MTO wanting to kick all of this back upon us, put it at sixty and let go. Design it, but put it at sixty, and this idea of going at ninety in school zone is, you know, that's not very good forward planning. There, that was one to the planners, that that's where we're looking at this, so. That's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go to, did you have a response or? No, okay, so we'll go to Counselor Body and then we'll go over to Counselor McQueen.
I'm I'm picking up the consensus and we'll have a a motion to amend in a few minutes when, after the discussion's gone through. A note in Gray Highlands in front of the Gray Highlands School on Highway ten, it is fifty kilometers. A block down from here, south of Eighth Street is sixty kilometers. If the posted speed is going to end up being sixty kilometers, is there any advantage to it being designed to ninety kilometers? And what are the cost consequences likely to be estimated at between designing it for sixty and designing it for ninety?
Through you, Warden. In terms of the costs, this would have been quite a while ago, and it was, at that time, we were talking about a hundred kilometer design speed. I believe it was in the range of about half a million in that, at that time. I'm not sure exactly where it is, just because it's not really our design, it's part of through the consultant there. So I can't speak to what the exact cost was, but I would see probably just like south side of five hundred. Yeah, yeah, so for sixty, because it really, the the design speed, again, it's a separate issue. The posted speed, whether you go to sixty or eighty, you're still going to have a number of vehicles exceeding eighty kilometers per hour. So the concern is, really revolves around that. You want to make sure that you're reducing the risk of potential collisions because there's insufficient stop site distance. So whether it's a sixty or eighty, there is slightly reduced amount of number of vehicles that will come down from that speed. But historically, what we found is it's not going to be significant enough. So if it's posted at sixty, we'd still anticipate probably fifteen to twenty percent exceeding eighty kilometers per hour. So the concern is, if you go with an eighty kilometer design speed, those vehicles now are at a risk of a potential collision. By going to ninety kilometer design speed, that reduces significantly down to potentially anywhere between two to five percent, depending whether it's sixty or eighty kilometers per hour.
And that study is based on the way it's situated right now, doing the study approximately where the school is. And that has to change when you put in an inf- and an intersection and start having big yellow buses going through, correct?
It will change, the issue will be is whether people see those school buses when they make the turn on to Gray Road five. So coming over that crest, they're not going to see them when they make that turn, they're going to start speeding up. And then also they'll come over the crest of the hill and then school buses will be there. So they're basically, and I think one of the pictures in the slideshow kind of shows what it looks like right now.
Okay, so if you, did you want that back up, that slide back up? So while you're doing that, we're going to go to Counselor McQueen and then over to Counselor Dobree.
Thank you, Madam Ward. Would agree with Deputy Mayor, or sorry, Deputy Warden, with regards to that speed. If you're heading north, before you get to Eighth Street, you're doing sixty. It doesn't make sense to speed up to eighty and then you're coming to a stoplight. And the other thing, I can see why you're you're probably, your numbers weren't as high coming south because they know further ahead, you're lowering to sixty. Anyway, I I just would say that I would agree with that concept. The Eighth Street, I think you said it currently, right now it's eighty. But obviously, if that area starts to develop, there may be pressure from the city of Owen Sound to reduce that speed in the future, who knows, right? But as another example, on Gray Road four in Maxwell, there's a public school there that when lights are flashing, drop to forty on a county road. And that's sightlines are straight. But there is a bit of a walking sidewalk that kids can walk into Maxwell, but that is an example of a county road where there's a school and then flashing lights, it drops to forty, that's fifty right now. Oh, and the intersection. I don't understand, is is this going to be an intersection or it's going to be a huge turn into the property? Are you designing an intersection or you're designing a proper turn into the school? Like you're building a road, but it's a road going one way. I I I have a little trouble supporting a resolution that we're not going to create an intersection to the east because that's not even in the plans. Like, I don't understand from MTO's perspective, other than they just don't want to see something develop in the Miford property, but obviously, if it's just a resolution, but I I sort of see that's a bit of a stretch, but that's just my comments.
Yeah, through you, Warden. The intersection would be a T intersection, basically, to stop control. Effectively, as development occurs, that might change and it might not even be signaled or there's been discussions around it as well. So all of those could be potential, depending on the long term forecast of that area.
So at between eight and nine, and probably three or four, it's going to be a busy spot. School buses, people picking up their kids, dropping kids off. You know, somebody that's not familiar with that road, say they're only driving it, and all of a sudden, whoa, I see it eighty. I just reinforced the whole part going back to sixty, just because of those two times that are busy times, maybe even lunchtime, if you're as Counselor Echols says, it's 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 sort of what has happened in the past as well, and it just sort of makes sense, I think.
Thank you, through you, Warden, and I think that's, as Trevor's indicated, there's two distinctions here. One is the design speed and the construction design speed to make sure that the the road and because Trevor indicated, the crest of the road is causing sightline issues at that proposed intersection. And as it currently stands, until that, those lands, other lands around that develop out, driver behavior usually is that there's needs to be usually some visual cues outside of the posted speed limit to be able to slow down driver behavior. That's based on, again, what Trevor indicated from studies and results that we've seen in the past. So there's, there's a key distinction, and what I'm hearing potentially from the comments so far, and just wanted to clarify, is the direction to continue to, as staff are recommending currently in this report, is to keep the design speed to construct that road at a ninety kilometer hour design speed. But that I'm hearing that there's interest to maybe lower that supposed speed limit to sixty kilometers an hour. And so just seeking clarification on that, if if there was And so just seeking clarification on that, if if there was a uh, an amended motion or a motion to to uh, being proposed. Um, on that piece, but the the part of that too is, is right now, the motion that's before council is to consider the design speed. Which staff are recommending is ninety kilometers design speed. Typically, as you may recall, we bring, Transportation Services brings this back to council. Uh, suggestions or comments about reductions in design speeds, and there's usually a subsequent bylaw revision. To reduce those bylaw speeds, so that could be the direction in terms of considering at the next uh, time we update that. Um, because, again, thinking from a timing perspective. If the direction is to do a ninety kilometer design speed construction, we'd probably want that construction completed. Before we post at a sixty kilometer design speed. So just making sure from a timing perspective and seeking clarity from council, what the direction would be with those factors that I just highlighted.
Okay, thank you for that additional information, I'm gonna go to Councilor Dobrine and uh, I will just look for any final hints. Because I did hear Councilor Body mention that he was interested in a in in proposing an amendment, so. So we'll go to Councilor Dobrine and then over to Councilor Mackey, and then we'll see where we are about discussing any amendment.
Thank you, and thank you both, um, it was a very detailed report. I had to read it a couple of times, uh, in. But thank you, so looking at that map, there are. Uh, indications where you had steady intersections, but they may not necessarily currently exist. And. If I'm not mistaken, the report said post-secondary school. So therefore, chances of there being buses are less, because. Many in post-secondary institutions are driving themselves. So maybe you could clarify, am I getting, it said post-secondary in the report? So is it, is it a secondary school, is it a grade school? Thank you, that's my first question, if I may, Warden.
Yes, thank you for that question, uh, Councilor Dobrine, um, my apologies if that was the case within the report. Um, it should've certainly been secondary school, so these would be high school age students. Yeah, so there would be busing involved, thank you for that clarification.
Did you have a follow-up, Councilor Dobrine?
Yes, that was my first question. The second question, then, now that I know that it is a secondary school or a community school, yes, there's gonna be buses, there's gonna be training lanes. There's going to be increased traffic with people dropping off their children, I would, um. I would see in the future that there be, you know, a set of lights which serves as a traffic calming. Measure as well, my concern with, and and I totally support building it for the ninety. I have um, difficulties understanding why we we set a speed. Because people are going to speed. And so I actually do support a lower speed limit. And the people need to adjust their speed accordingly, and future stops. Or stoplights will help slow that down, but I do understand the need to build it at the ninety. Because of the lack of indications that there is a school coming up, um. And and those are my comments, I wanted to thank you and and thank you for clarifying that it is a secondary school, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we're gonna go to Councilor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Becky, thank you, Trevor, I'm not sure if Randy clarified things for me or made things more complicated, but I I know, I I appreciate the effort. The design speed, the actual speed, I think we're getting caught up in that, what, I guess my simple question is, Trevor. You talked about the the Noel, and on, it it actually shows that Noel on page, what? Page fifty-six of seventy-nine. The design speed of ninety kilometers, will that eliminate that Noel, I know there was some talk about cost savings by reducing, but. I mean, in a a school zone, I'm not sure the the car, we need to make sure the kids are safe for for those people that are speeding, so. We need that line of sight, so will the ninety kilometer design eliminate that Noel, so it's safer? I think it's my question, thank you.
Uh, yeah, basically, the Noel, the purpose of the night, the ninety kilometer design speed is strictly to reduce the hill and bring it down. Um, effectively, the rest of the road is sixty, eighty, ninety, a hundred, it. The design speed doesn't matter in the rest of the road, it's really just the hill, the crest of that hill, yes. Exactly. Yes.
Okay, so, okay, we'll go to Councilor Greg, and we'll see see what's gonna happen after that, Councilor Greg.
Thank you, and I would be able to just confirm the rationale for changing that. Section to the south to a sixty kilometers an hour was because of the sightlines. That existed at the intersection of Superior Street and Twenty-Eighth Avenue, we did that about seven or eight years ago. At the city, uh, that was the the complete rationale for doing so, um. It's mentioned in the report, the impediment is the vertical curve, and it's a design speed for eighty, I can't help but think there are other locations in the county. One of them is a few miles southwest of. Desborough on Grey Road three, where many years back, um, it was. Placed as a sixty kilometer an hour zone, it goes over a a leg of the Solgene River at that location. The rationale at the time was because of a driveway that existed at the northernmost. Uh, portion of that sixty zone, and the county didn't wanna incur the cost of cutting the hill down to a, for appropriate sightlines. So it's a sixty for probably a mile through, as you go down that hill. Um, most people abide by it, Councilor Eccle's car might fly through there a little quick, the EV's really motor. Um. But there are instances like that. Where cost was an issue back in the day, it was several years ago, that was, that was the case, and it remains a sixty, I. I mean, that's open highway, this is a portion of an urban boundary road. I I don't, I cannot understand why we certainly wouldn't entertain making it a sixty. And it already has a design speed of eighty at that vertical impediment, I think behaviors are going to change, I'm kind of with. Councilor Dobrine, who's like, why do we continue to construct? To facilitate faster vehicle movements in areas where we shouldn't be facilitating it. Um. Yeah, the design, if it was already at ninety or a hundred and we move it to sixty, that's even safer. But it's a design speed of eighty now, we could post it at fifty in the future when it goes to the city under control. Um. Sixty, I think, is where it should be, it's just a continuum of, we did nothing more on. Twenty-eighth Avenue between Superior Street and Eighth Avenue, other than probably two signs. To make people aware that this was no longer an eighty zone, it's now a sixty, and we haven't had any issues. So I struggle with a huge expenditure, whether it's the county taxpayer paying for an upgrade to the road, to a higher design speed. Or the school board, which would be even worse, the amount of costs that have been. Dragged out of the school board to be able to move this project forward to get to where we are even now, that those are funds that aren't going into music programs. Athletics, other complimentary programs of schools, it's just lost in bureaucracy. Um, so I think we certainly should be entertaining sixty at the minimum, and uh, I'm not convinced. At the location, why a large expenditure does need to occur, um, to make it a higher. Design speed as well.
Okay, is there a comment?
Yeah, just to speak to that, so. One of the elements that does kinda make this different than maybe the one in Desborough, the one in Desborough being a single entrance sort of, so a couple. Enter exits a day, maybe, um, here we have a situation where we have buses, cars. You know, hundreds of vehicles coming in and out of that intersection each day, so again, it's a. Different level of risk associated with those two, that's really the only part I can speak to, I guess, in terms of your question.
Okay, thank you, um, okay, we'll do another comment, and then I'm gonna uh, return to Councilor Body's um, comment about being interested in in amendment.
So it's where that hill is and where the proposed entrance to the school, the distance there isn't enough coming up over that hill. For sightlines, and the concern that. Traffic turning too fast as they come around the corner and head south. What about going to the other side? Just flip the building around. And put the intersection, put the intersection at the south part of the property. Or does that eliminate that house, is that why they designed it that way? If, if we were doing this in the rural areas. And doing a severance. That entrance would have to meet. Right, on a hill, nope, can't have the severance here, because, or. Move where you want your entrance to get that. Is that a solution? And no construction would be needed, it increases the distance. And just tell the school board, turn your building around. Put your main entrance onto the south side. So that you get a lot more, and that settles a bit of climate control, because now the entrance and everything's on the north side of the building. And in the winter, that's usually the coldest part of the building. I. Just a thought.
Okay, uh, the CIO would like to offer a comment, and then I'll look back to the lecture.
And staff may have to correct me if I'm if I'm incorrect on this this uh, this comment in response to Councilor Eccle's uh, the question. Um, I believe that was was proposed early on in in the process. Um, and I I don't know the exact reasons or variety of reasons why that was maybe not. Not a desired location, but I I know that that was that was discussed early on in terms of. Uh, a proposed potential solution to try to, again, address some of the. Um, the concerns that are being raised by Transportation Services staff at the moment.
Yeah, just to add to what CA, CIO Scherzer has has noted there, I I think. Um, yes, we've had significant discussions with city staff on on this matter and sort of where those those roads should align and locate, and. I think one of the crux of the concerns from from their perspective was, as you can see again in the photo, that area north of of where the orange is. Um, those lands are are vacant at this stage and are still to be developed. Um, and so there was the question as well of, we would need access to those lands, and ideally. We wouldn't have sole access from the from the highway, um, so that was certainly part of the larger discussion there as well.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to look back to the reference to an amendment, Councilor Body, was there an amendment that was you wish to propose?
Um, given all the discussion that is around, I'm gonna gonna put it out, and we can put it up, put it down, it's we're talking about design here, but. I will uh, move amendment of um, point three of the recommendation. Uh, to reduce the design speed from ninety kilometers an hour to sixty kilometers an hour, I think, if I've got it right, I don't see it up on the screen, but.
Okay, we'll just need to switch the screens around for you. Sorry, working on two computers here, just give us a moment. Okay, we're just switching it over to the deputy clerk, who is just typing it up, so it can be shown on the screen. Okay, so it reads that the motion be amended to amend clause three to reflect the design speed of. Sixty kilometers per hour along Grey Road five in front of the new school, is that the way that you wanted it captured, Councilor Body?
Before I confirm that, I just wanna clarify, it currently would be at eighty kilometers an hour if left alone. Then I'd like my uh, motion to say the motion be amended to amend clause three to reflect the design speed of eighty kilometers an hour. Thank you.
Okay, so it reads as I've just read out, with eighty kilometers per hour for design instead of sixty. Okay, so that motion has been moved by Councilor Body, is there a second for that amendment? I, it's seconded by Councilor Greg, it's now on the floor for discussion, just this amendment is on the floor for discussion, Councilor Dobrine.
Just to clarify, that it says along Grey Road five in front of the new school, and the original resolution said in the area of the proposed intersection. And I wanna make sure that they're one in the same. Okay, nope, and as long as we have the same outcome.
Uh, yes, we are speaking about the same stretcher rope, okay, from start to finish, okay, uh, Councilor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden, um, and through you to Trevor, this proposed amendment, Trevor, would pose a safety concern? From your department's standpoint?
Yeah, in my professional opinion, it would, um, effectively, the amount of vehicles that would still exceed eighty, I'd be content with it.
Okay, over to Councilor Dobrine.
Just to follow up on that, then. Would it be of benefit to also indicate our desire to lower the speed limit to sixty, would that resolve the safety concerns?
And three, Warden, it would help to mitigate, it wouldn't eliminate them, uh, it would probably reduce them. About half, maybe a little more than half, but. Uh, like, based on our numbers, we'd have about thirty percent exceeding eighty right now. Um, based on historical trends and data, it could get down to maybe ten to fifteen percent, and kind of like a bare minimum. Um, if we were to post it to that, we would see the ninety probably get pretty close to zero. So posting at a sixty with a ninety design speed, you almost eliminate the risk versus uh, eighty, you would still see perceived risk.
Okay, we'll go to Councilor Greg.
And I'd like to add an amendment to that. That staff report back to council on a reducing of the speed limit to sixty kilometers an hour for that zone. Uh, let's go through first and do the amendment next. I I wanna, I wanna put it here now, because it is associated with the safety concern and the conversation, I think. Uh, so that it's acknowledged that it's it's, you know, part and and both at the same time.
Okay, so Councilor Greg, you are proposing an amendment to the amendment. Um, and I appreciate, although the report is all about design speed. We can hear that everybody is making that connection about what the final speed limit might be, so I appreciate that, I do believe that is. Part of what we are here to discuss, I don't think it's a separate matter, so we'll carry on with these amendments to the main motion. This is an amendment to the, to the amendment, uh, that the primary amendment be amended to request. A staff report on a proposed speed limit of sixty kilometers per hour, is there a second for that amendment to? The original amendment, seconded by Councilor Dobrine, okay, so it is now on the floor for discussion. And it is up there on the screen, so we are now discussing that the primary amendment be amended to request. A staff report on a proposed speed limit of sixty kilometers per hour on Gray. I realize it's hard to sometimes discuss one piece without discussing the holistic picture. But we'll have to try to stay to process and just focus in on this particular adjustment that has been proposed. And we will go, um, just before I go to Councilor McQueen, I had, I. And we will go, um, just before I go to Counselor McQueen, I had, I, I wasn't sure if that was a stretch, Counselor Echols, or a hand up. So it was a hand up. So we're going to begin with Counselor Echols and then over to Counselor McQueen.
So just for clarity, we have an amendment on the floor. And now we have another amendment, but it's not amending the amendment. So.
It is, yeah, it, it is actually an amendment to the amendment. So it, it, it is not an amendment to the main motion, it is an amendment to the amendment. I know, it's, it's challenging, but that's what we're looking at. If this mo, if this particular amendment to the, the amendment passes, then we will carry on to discuss, Counselor Body's amendment with this embodied into it or not, depending on how this goes. Okay, so with that, then we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Is it possible that we could pull up the picture in the report? And the reason I say that, it does do a perspective on that hill, is that possible? It's kind of, I have a question.
Okay, so you're requesting the diagram that was in the report?
Oh, sorry. Uh, to, to you, Madam Warden, to the, uh, to Trevor, from that viewpoint of that picture. Um, is that looking, that's looking south? And right now that is looking, um, and I presume the property. Or maybe you can help me out where that intersection would be, is it row of trees, it's past the row of trees? But looking at that, and if it was to a design speed of, of 80. Or 90, as you suggest. Then you see a little car way down at the end there, you can sort of, maybe you can't see it there. That would be much flatter from a design speed of 90. So right now, I think it was, it was pointed out that right now that's a design speed of, of 80 currently. So that wouldn't change. And also the amendment is to have a report about reducing that speed, as you see it posted there, of 80 to 60. My, my other question, so that's for clarity, my question is, is, is that row of trees where that entrance will be? And is, if, if that other lands get developed, how does that affect the design and the speed of that road? Because it, it's more of a sightline issue going south, but is it a sightline issue going north as well? Thank you.
Uh, yeah, three, Warden. So in terms of where the entrance is right, basically it's not visible in that drawing. It is not past the trees, it's actually this side of the trees. You kind of see the, almost the greenish, the most green tree in the middle. That's a separate row of trees. Uh, and it's kind of out in front of the book there, but it is down below that hill. The other element with this, the photo's taken obviously from, uh, on top of a vehicle with the, the cameras. So again, the sightline from the camera is about a meter higher than the actual eyesight that we, we went to. So, uh, two parts to play here, even in this image, you can't see the entrance. And there is sort of a pseudo field entrance in that location right now. And yeah, when you basically drive on that, you don't really see anything till about, probably about where the 80 kilometer designs be, or like the posted speed sign is in that image. Just when you see the approximate driveway. Well, I get, or for the northbound too, there is no sightline issue from the northbound perspective.
Just follow up on that, so if that was brought to the design speed that you're talking about. From the, if you were sitting in a car at that spot, a meter and a half down from where that's taken, you would see, you could see the whole road. Uh, what would you see?
You could effectively, you potentially see the road in the distance. Probably not, but as you come across there, yeah, it'll slowly open up. You'll be able to see farther away than closer out first. Kind of where that large tree line is, is about 400 meters from the intersection. And if, again, if the intersection was in that location, you would be able to see it ending the position stops on, or stopping. Yeah, and with, if it was at that farther distance on the south side as well, like that, you could accommodate within 80 as well. But where it's being proposed, it would need to be at 90, at that north limit of the property.
Okay, so we're still on the amendment to the amendment, we'll go to Counselor Kenner.
Uh, thank you, Madam, uh, Warden. And, uh, you've quoted research from Sweden. Uh, is there any research to indicate the effect? An improved sightline would have on drivers. And what I'm getting at is, would they speed up to pass a slow-moving vehicle because they had a more favorable sightline?
In terms of, sightlines there, a lot, well, depending on the driver, really. There would likely be, all of the, any yellow dash lines and that that would indicate safe passing zones would be built to the design speed of the location. And typically on most of our roads, we go to a 90 kilometer design speed for, uh, center line measure, or, uh, yellow lines, basically. The chance would be coming off the edge or end of the intersection. There's always a risk of someone, if, say even, it might be someone that's been following someone that's going slow on the highway and they're getting overly agitated. They might immediately try to just make a quick pass. Um, the likelihood of someone being able to make a pass before the proposed entrance location is, unless they're very agitated and in a major rush, I don't expect to start a path. Um, until they're over that hill and can see, otherwise they're making a pass in a spot they can't see over the crest of the hill. Yeah.
Okay, let's see then. Okay, I don't see any further hands up, making sure on the screen, on the virtual screen as well. No, no further hands up on this amendment to the amendment. So I'm going to call the question now on the amendment to the amendment, which is that the primary amendment be amended to request a staff report on a proposed speed limit of 60 kilometers per hour on Gray Road five in this location. All those in favor? Okay, that is carried. Okay, so we'll take a moment to adjust the original amendment. And then we will continue with that discussion. Okay, so it, uh, okay, so then the amendment to the main motion now reads that the main motion be amended by changing clause three to reduce the design speed from 90 kilometers per hour to 80 kilometers per hour in front of the new school. And that a staff report be brought forward to a proposed, uh, on, on a proposed speed limit of 60 kilometers per hour on Gray Road five at this location. That is now what we're discussing, any further discussion on this amendment? We'll go to Counselor Echols.
So unclear, by going to leaving it at an 80 kilometer design, which it is at the present moment, been approved. The county would not need to do any work on this road. Minimal. But they put it to a 90 kilometer design. We're gonna have to cut, tear, and somewhere around half a million, you were thinking?
Got three, Warden. There is, uh, construction works that have to occur regardless. Uh, there's new lanes, curb, um, but in terms of actual, um, go construction, there would be no excavation. So effectively, they would, they would take out the excavator, like, replace the granular material, the asphalt. And construct the new road, but at the same grade that it currently exists.
And those lanes, turning lanes, whatever you want that are going into the school, would be at the developer's cost. Correct? Yeah, so by leaving it at an 80 kilometer design. The budgetary impact is going to be extremely minimal for the county. Yeah.
Okay.
By putting it to a 90, we were probably going to be in for, depending if those gas lines are in the right spot. And the school has tested and said they're in the right spot. We're probably into this for a half a million.
Someone would be, um, it wouldn't necessarily be us. Typically, those would be the result, or the development would pay for those sort of charges, unless there was some sort of, um, potential agreement that was done at the side of that, but.
Okay, and just, just for the record too, and just, I think, if you can just make sure you've answered fully to the original question before there was that second question added on. Uh, just because you didn't have your mic on at this, at the time, so we just want to make sure everybody heard the response that wouldn't be sitting in the room. Thank you.
Yeah, so in terms of the extra cost, there would be no extra cost to, um, to the school board for constructing it. Above, beyond what they've already constructed.
Okay, so we're going to go to Counselor Greg next.
I would just like to add, it was noted about passing, uh, notations or delineation on that. Many in this room were part of a decision to, uh, eliminate passing from Rockford to Minnetonka Corners on Gray Road 18. So if you really want to be concerned about safety, you can make further decisions that enhance people's safety. And this would be one block where you could consider down the road, just removing any delineations on passing options. No different than, uh, recent decision that has been made in this room, thanks.
Okay, um, all right, yeah, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Arton.
I was just gonna mention, usually, once we reduce down to 60, typically there's generally no passing in any 60 or below speed limit zones anyway.
Okay, thank you. So I don't see any further hands up then. So we are now voting on the amendment to the main motion. And the amendment we are voting on is that the main motion be amended by changing clause three to reduce the design speed from 90 kilometers per hour to 80 kilometers per hour in front of the new school. And that a staff report be brought forward on a proposed speed limit of 60 kilometers per hour on Gray Road five at this location. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. Okay, so we are now revisiting the main motion as it has been amended. I'll just give a moment for the clerks to update that. Okay, I have already read the main motion, I have already read the amended motion, I'm not going to reread it all pieced together. But this was with regards to the final sections of that motion, so it is up on the screen for you to do a final review. And we'll do for any final, uh, discussion points on this main motion, which is now what we are voting on. Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and, and with regards to the amended motion. Uh, with regards to the report to come back, a lot of school zones, as I mentioned a little bit ago, reduce the speed during school times. I don't know if that report can reflect that, and what's the rationale around that? Because like I said in Maxwell, at a certain time, it goes from 50 to 40 during that time. And I don't know if that can come back in the report, because that, during those times, may reduce it even more. Or what's the rationale behind that, maybe an explanation through the report would, would speak to that. Thank you.
Okay, and I guess that would also be part of, in the report, would be the clarification about being a community safety zone as well. Okay, anything else to ask, comment? Yes, Counselor Dicker.
Thank you, I, on the, uh, on page 5479, it says, future short-term road and future long-term road. Can, what is the definition of, is this a temporary road, or why are they trimming it short-term?
There might be a page differentiation between the whole package. Page three, bottom of page three.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So this, um, so it reads, it is unlikely that further substantive development would occur on the subject lands in the short or medium term planning horizon, unless substantive changes in the current planning framework were to occur. So this is a bit confusing. So in this case, the, the, the lands in question are actually the lands across the road. Uh, that would be subject to an entrance, um, for that fourth leg extent, extension. So this piece is really around that MTO request. Um, and so again, given the limitations of development on those lands across the road, which are outside of the settlement area, located within the municipality of Meaford, and also located within the Niover Escarpment Plan area. Again, so the, um, the short or medium term planning horizon, um, staff feel that it's unlikely that development is to occur there, um, within that planning horizon. If that helps, does that make sense?
Okay, is there a follow-up?
So just to clarify, so the term short-term isn't temporary, it's, it's a road that is planned. But I'm, I'm just, I am confused as the difference between short-term and long-term.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, in this case, um, the, the reference is, is not necessarily about the road. Um, it's really about whether or not planning, or sorry, new development were to occur on those lands across the road. Um, so typically, um, when, when we're planning, we look sort of 20, 25, 30 years out. Um, and, and think about kind of what are those things that we need to consider within that framework? Um, and, you know, it's unlikely, um, from staff's perspective, that, you know, within the next 20 years or so, we're likely to see, um, a settlement area, um, in the city of Owensound that would, that would encompass those lands. Uh, certainly, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't predict the future. But given the, the planning policies and framework that we have at this stage, um, that's, that's sort of what we're seeing there. So the road itself would not be short-term, the intersection itself would not be short-term. You know, if other developments are proposed in the surrounding area, of course, we would likely ask for that additional traffic review at that stage. There may be other additions or updates or upgrades to the roads proposed at that time. But, um, yeah, nothing about the road that's proposed at this stage would be sort of short-term.
Okay, any other final comments? Okay, so we've had a healthy discussion on it, it has been amended. We are voting now on the main motion as it's been amended, we have read that out already. So I will call the question, all those in favor? Okay, uh, could I ask you all to keep your hands up for a moment, please? Thank you. Okay, so, uh, Madam Clerk, I see that is carried. Okay, thank you very much, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Arton and Ms. Hillier for guiding us through that discussion. And with that, we will move on to item 7E. And we have online with us, we have Director Morrow to speak to this item, so I will put it on the floor. I'll see about getting it on the floor first. It's recommended that report HHRCW 0225 regarding the results of collective bargaining between Rockwood Terrace and Unifor Local 302 be received. And that County Council ratify and approve the recommendations of the bargaining team between the County of Gray and Unifor Local 302 to bind the new collective agreements, and that the warden and clerk be authorized to sign and bind the new collective agreements as ratified. And that County Council authorizes staff to make the necessary amendments to the rates of pay, benefits, and other issues identified as agreed changes. And may I ask for a mover in a second or please? And may I ask for a mover in a second here, please? Okay, so it's moved by Counselor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Mackey. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director Morrow.
Good afternoon, Warden Matrasovs and members of council. Firstly, I'm happy to say there are no speed limits to consider within this report. And I will get us started on a brief summary of the agreed to items with our union partners. So as outlined in the recommendation, the County of Gray and Unifor Local Three O Two successfully negotiated a new memorandum of settlement for Rockwood Terrace staff. That is all staff with the exception of non-union and our own nursing partners. So the settlement supports the county's vision to be a high-performance municipal employer and maintains a respectful, respectful partnership between management and union representatives. Within the memorandum of settlement, there are wage increases and premium increases. So the agreement includes a market adjustment to the role of cook at fifty cents per hour increase before across-the-board wage increases. For all staff, there are general wage increases over the two years totaling six percent. We have made modest increases to shift premiums for weekdays and weekends and a modest increase to responsibility pay for unionized employees who temporarily take on supervisory roles. In regards to employee, employee benefit enhancements, we included a long-term disability coverage enhancement that matches the rate of compensation at today's rate. Previously, we had a maximum in there that didn't provide for sixty-six percent of higher-paid staff members within this collective agreement. We also included enhancements to pregnancy and parental leave top-up provisions and an additional paid holiday for unionized indigenous staff members, specifically National Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is recognized on June twenty-first of each calendar year. For working conditions and allowances, the agreement defines orientation hours for registered practical nurses. It revises job posting procedures to recognize our new online systems. It provides normative increases for reimbursement for uniforms and safety boots that are in line with our long-term care homes in Markdale and Owens Sound. And it increases vacation entitlement to six weeks for unionized staff members with over twenty years of service. The financial impact and costing, the first year cost is approximately two hundred thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the second year cost has been roughly estimated at two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty-nine, five hundred and fifty-five thousand in the second year. And both of those years are within the upset limit that council had previously approved when they provided us our negotiating mandate. And I'll leave the summary at that, and I'm available to answer questions if anyone has any.
Thank you. So I'll put it out to County Council members if they have any questions. I think maybe the last one just tired everybody out, so I don't see anything. We do have one from Counselor Eccles.
Is the shoe boot premium very similar to our other contracts or just the contracts within long-term care? Is a number of these, it's pay equity? So I was wondering whether that is equal going back on the pay equity comparisons.
Through you, Counselor Eccles, we wouldn't be considering pay equity when it comes to boots, but we do consider the actual work performed. I believe, and without pulling all of the collective agreement and benefits together, the only group that has a higher rate is our QB operators. And our QB operators are permitted to boot purchases within a year within an upset limit, and that is due to the additional work duties that they perform. As you can imagine, when you're operating a plow in the winter months, that's a pretty sweaty endeavor for your boots. And our QB partners go through those faster.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I was remiss earlier, pardon me, Warden Matrasovs and members of council. I'm happy to say as well that the memorandum of settlement was successfully, positively ratified by our union partners earlier last week.
Okay, thank you. So I'll look around the room. We have a question from Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Thanks, Jen, for the report. The question is around the, the conditions for the indigenous holiday and whether or not, like in B.C., it is a statutory holiday for the, the province of B.C. Are we giving it to one select group and will we be challenged by other staff, staff persons that they should receive it if we're only giving it to a select group? Thanks.
The National Truth and Reconciliation Day that is recognized in the fall is a federal statutory holiday. We now, within all of our groups, have more than the provincial standard. We have some recognized days, that being Remembrance Day. So yes, we are providing an additional day. We do provide National Indigenous Peoples' Day with the ratification of this collective agreement to our partners that holds status as First Nations, Inuit, and Métis on June twenty-first of each day. It's a day to honor and recognize the unique heritage diverse cultures and outstanding contributions to our culture of our indigenous staff members. And I would hope that we would not be challenged on that. But certainly within our culture, providing this day to our indigenous team members felt like a good thing to do to recognize their culture.
Hey, there's a follow-up from Counselor Mackey.
So the question, Jen, maybe I didn't come across it. It's not about giving it to our, our native or indigenous and Métis members at work for us. But will the other non-Métis, non-indigenous members then expect that they're going to get this statutory holiday also?
Through you, Matt, Warden Matrasovs to Counselor Mackey. The collective agreement is quite clear on who receives it and what is needed to qualify for it. And being as our bargaining unit partners have already ratified, I believe there's an understanding of what this day is given for and what is meant to do.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any further hands up for any further questions, so I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. That motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director Morrow. Okay, so next we're going to go to item seven F. And it's with regards to the new multi, multi-residential property tax subclass, and the recommendation is that report FRCW seventeen-twenty-five new multi-residential property tax subclass options and considerations be received for information. May I ask for a mover in a second here? Moved by Counselor Keveney, seconded by Counselor DeBreen. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome, Director Spicer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Two thirteen in the afternoon. There's probably nothing more exciting to everybody in the room than tax policy. So I like to think that I've just one-upped planning. So in the spring twenty-twenty-five budget, there was a new optional affordable rental housing subclass that was introduced. If it's adopted, it, it provides a reduction of, for eligible units of up to thirty-five percent of the new multi-res rate. And so as a reminder, new multi-res is the same rate as residential, which is a one. So it would be up to thirty-five percent, and that's at the discretion of the municipality should it be adopted. So there's a number of requirements that need to be met regarding the eligibility. So it's not simply that it's the overall property or that you're in the, you're currently in the original multi-residential category. So each unit would need to meet the criteria about affordability. And tax policy, as a reminder, is set at the, the county level as the upper tier municipality. If we wished to implement this new subclass for twenty-twenty-six, a bylaw would have to be passed by September thirtieth. Attached to the agenda is correspondence that was received by the city of Owens Sound from Ontario, so Owens Sound Municipal Nonprofit asking that the subclass be adopted. And we haven't received through any other member municipalities a similar request, but we're aware of other nonprofits that are interested in the topic. And given the short timeframe to make a decision, the recommendation in the report is that we study the impact. If you're interested in pursuing what would be a third multi-residential class, albeit this one would be a subclass. And just because September thirtieth is the deadline, it doesn't mean the deadline forever. It's the deadline for twenty-twenty-six. And if you chose to tell us that you wanted to implement the subclass, we would pass the reduction as part of the twenty-twenty-six tax policy, which has to be passed in twenty-twenty-six. It can't be passed in advance of the year. Just as a reminder, so we've currently got two tax classes for multi-residential. Multi-res, which was the, the old one, and the new multi-res, which came in at a rate of one, again, the same as residential. And the only difference between the two was when the properties were built. So my report makes the, the reference that if you had two that had the exact same assessed value, one built in one year and one built in the year that applied to the new multi-res class, then the amount of property tax they would pay was different. So in twenty-twenty-three, council agreed with the recommendation to start moving the original multi-res ratio down over four years so that twenty-twenty-six would be the final year and it would then be the same ratio as the new multi-res class and residential at one. And there'd be some work to be done to determine eligibility. So we would need to determine what properties meet the criteria, how many units, and work with MPAK. So we do know the number of units that Gray County manages and where they're located, and they would qualify to move into this category if it was adopted. We also know for the nonprofits that we provide subsidy to, where those properties are located, and we would have to do some work to determine how many of them meet the eligibility of the affordability criteria and when, whether any of their market rent units fall into that criteria or not. And it's based on the criteria that is set for every municipality, but your affordability levels. And then we would also need to work to determine if there's any other units across the county that meet the criteria that might have these federal and provincial agreements that aren't anything that falls within our budget. That would require some assistance from MTE, your member municipalities, and discussions with MPAK. And as the report mentions, the units, we should keep in mind, are not evenly dispersed across the county. So we would want to do some sensitivity analysis if you were interested in ever adopting this subclass to determine the impact on the municipalities that obviously have more units than the rest and the impact as well because it would also affect the amount of property taxes that we are paying to your municipalities on behalf of the units that we have. And I, again, I know it's not the most exciting topic in the world, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay, well, and we have it on the floor to receive for information. So we'll put it out there to see if there are council members that have questions or comments, and we'll begin with Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. Thank you, Mayor Lou. And we in Southgate are receiving a similar letter from a community first housing group in Southgate, which we'll be updating as a result of this conversation, realizing that the county sets the rates and that there's some work involved in determining the implications of existing affordable units that would qualify and the costs associated because the amount of dollars it just shifts to residential class. So I understand that there would be work involved. And, but I'm, but I'm grateful that you clarified that it would apply to only those eligible units within a multi-residential. So that, then there again, there's that much more calculations. In this report, through you, Warden, do we need to provide direction that we are interested in getting that report and further through that process so that we are in a position to make a decision as to whether or not we want to introduce this subclass? Like right now, we're only receiving for information. If council would like to provide staff with direction, that we would need to undertake some work, yes.
Okay, so we'll just finish our discussion and then perhaps revisit that. We'll go to Counselor Greg.
Thank you, Warden, for the opportunity to speak to this. Mayor Lou, I've been jacked for this report all day. Don't sell yourself short. I'm excited. I, I would actually have a subsequent motion to the effect that staff not pursue a tax subclass for a variety of reasons. Anyone I'm going to enter into a debate in this subject, the first question I'm going to ask them is, are the residents consuming any less services than any of the other residents around them? We all use the same services and we're all asked to pay for them. This isn't like farmland that doesn't use policing, doesn't go to the library, doesn't skate in the rice rink, doesn't go to the park. It doesn't use any services, so there's less tax burden. This is a request to minimize the tax burden at a great expense potentially to the other existing taxpayers across the county. Those taxpayers across the county did not create the affordability crisis. This is something that's been building and needs support from higher levels of government, but it's unfair and not equitable to ask other taxpayers to assume the tax burden to facilitate this subclass. It's not fixing the problem of affordability, it's shifting it to twenty-five or thirty-year-olds who are paying eighteen hundred or two thousand dollars a month in an apartment or forty percent or forty-five percent of their income and asking them to pay more for the same services as everyone else is using. The last thing I would say, the easiest part of the tax calculation is the very last one, which is a simple calculation of the tax rate versus the assessed value. And the framework or the principle of property tax as it exists right now is those that have a higher ability to afford to pay more do, and it's generally comes about from the higher assessed value on their property. Tax rate is the same against higher ability to pay, so they pay more. So there's already that built into the system, and I certainly don't support entertaining subclasses that are not going to be able to, to solve the problem and worsen affordability on other, particularly portions of the county, because I'm certainly aware of where most of the affordable housing would lay. And most of it is in the higher urban centers of Owens Sound and Hanover likely. You'd be contributing less to the county, and the other municipalities are all going to be absorbing that reduction from the, those, that tax burden coming from those municipalities. So those are my comments on it. I am certainly in support of receiving for information, but I don't think I, I think I'd like to provide direction to staff that in the future, in the face of further requests that do come in, that we're not following up on this. There's a plethora of different items from the county I don't, or from the province I don't agree with. This is one of them. Highway four thirteen, their position on speed cameras, bike lanes, the province isn't always right, and I think this is an indication of something they put in the budget that is there, but it should not be taken advantage of.
Okay, thank you. So we, the main motion right now is that we're looking to receive for information. There was also some dialogue that came from the previous counselor in terms of what, what there might be in a next step, so we've heard a couple of opinions on that, so I will look around for other comments. We'll go to, I was going to say Counselor Nielsen because you're sitting in Counselor Nielsen's chair. Counselor Mackey, we'll go to you.
I've had the hat on once, but I did. I, I just wanted to say that I agree with Counselor Greg, and if he is putting a motion on the floor that I would second, if that he not look at this any further. Thank you.
Okay, now, the way that we have the motion right now is just to receive for information. Right now, there would be no further action, just to receive for information. If there's, if there's an amendment to that main motion, then that may cause us to look at, at other avenues. Okay. cause us to look at, at other avenues. Okay. Uh, looking around the room for other discussion. Okay. So we are now, it looks like we've exhausted the hands on the discussion of the main motion. So I will just follow through and say, is there an amendment to the main motion to propose? So we'll go to Counselor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden. And through you, um, appreciating that it will require work in providing the information. I still feel there is value to this table to understanding the impact that this request would have on our residents, uh, whether or not it's introduced. Um, I'm not in favor usually of, of asking for work that might not get supported. But in this case, um, we are all getting the requests to, and I think it's worth understanding what the financial implications would be on our, our tax taxpayers. So I would like to put a motion for an amendment forward and that a staff report come back to council outlining the financial implications of this subclass proposal.
Okay. Um, thank you. And Deputy Warden, are you seconding that? Okay. So it's moved and seconded. We're going to give the clerk a moment to put that up onto the screen and then we'll uh, make sure the wording is correct for you, Counselor Dobrine. And just before we visit that, we'll go to Mary Lou.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And so just for clarity, i- if we go ahead and we study this, um, if there is no bylaw passed by September 30th, um, there is no adoption of the subclass for 2026. So we'd be studying this in 2027 with the earliest adoption if council chose would be 2027.
Okay. Um, so Counselor Dobrine, it has been moved and seconded. Um, is there some clarification in the wording then that you wish? Or?
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify that we would not be, a report would not be coming back. The work would not be done until 2027 for 2027, or it would be done in 2026 for implementation at the end of 2026 for 2027.
Through you, Madam Warden. Yes. So we would undertake work in 2026 to inform a decision that would either be made or for information only uh, for 2027 tax policy.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. It's on the floor for discussion. We're just discuss, discussing the amendment. We'll go to Counselor Greg.
Thank you. Quick question to Mayor Lou. Can you confirm yes or no that there's going to still be a subsequent reduction in the old multi-residential rate next year as long as council conforms to the uh, trajectory that we had set?
Through you, Madam Warden. Uh, so you're correct, Counselor Greg, that 2026 is the last year of the proposed reduction to the original multi-res ratio. And as we've done with the, the previous three reductions, we have worked in conjunction with the city of Owen Sound because we need to be in lockstep with the city. It would not serve any benefit if we implemented the reduction and Owen Sound did not. Because again, where are the, the bulk of the units?
Okay. We'll go to Counselor Dobrine.
Thank you. And I did note that I would like to modify the wording somewhat just to clarify that this is a property subclass of up to 35%. It wouldn't mean that even if council decided to pursue it, that it would have to be the full 35%, correct?
Okay. Let me hear the response, um, because I have to make sure we're not doing anything that's substantive in the, the motion that's been moved and seconded.
Through you, Madam Warden. Yes, the, the way the propos, the subclass works is that a council could choose to make a reduction of up to 35%. And it would be the council's choice of what that percent was.
Okay. So there's no need to make any clarification in the motion. Okay. Uh, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. We're ready to call the, the vote on the amendment and it is, uh, where is the amendment card? Uh, so the amendment that we're voting on, uh, that has been moved and seconded is that the motion be amended, the main motion be amended by inserting a clause to request a staff report on financial impacts on implementation of the new multi-residential property tax subclass. That's what we're voting on. All those in favor? Okay. Uh, hold your hands high, please, for me. Okay. And all those against? Okay. Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, there's a request for a recorded vote. Um, we will, um, I, uh, Madam Clerk, I want to give you some time and space to set that up. So I'll, I'll declare a two minute break before we call that vote. Oh. Okay. Sorry. There's a new system in place. She's all set. We've got to go ahead. Okay. All right. So Madam Clerk, then if you are ready, then please call that recorded vote.
Counselor Mackey? I didn't. Counselor Mackey opposed. Counselor McKay is absent. Counselor Carlton? Counselor Carlton is in favor. Counselor Pringle? Opposed. Counselor McQueen? Opposed. Counselor Nielsen?
Opposed.
Opposed. Counselor Patterson? Opposed. Counselor Dickert? Opposed. Counselor Kentner? Sure, that was in favor. Okay. Counselor Kentner is in favor. Counselor Kivony? In favor. Counselor Body? Opposed. Counselor Greg? Opposed. Counselor Milne? In favor. Counselor Dobrine? In favor. Warden Mattressopps? In favor. In favor. Counselor Boarding is absent. Counselor Echols? Opposed. Counselor Hutchinson left at lunch. That motion uh, lost 49/31.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, we actually have gone past break time, so I'm just going to call a two minute break if we can just, if anybody needs a break, because we do have a number of items left to go on the agenda. And um, and then we'll reconvene. So two minutes, we'll be back on schedule. Okay. So that has been a brief break. I'm going to encourage our county council members to come back to their seats and perhaps we can get somebody to round up others who may have left the room. All right. So I think we, uh, looks like we're getting a quorum of everyone seated. Okay. And um, Senior Manager Whitney, I know you're all excited about getting up, but hold on a second. I am going to put six B in front of you because yours is related to us going into closed session. So it makes for the flow of things, uh, the clerk and I discussed that it's better that we take care of a brief. I understand there's just a brief question on item six B, which was pulled from the consent agenda. So it's okay. Just relax. I've got my eye on you. I know, I know you're, I know you're heading our way. Okay. So we're going to return to the one item that was uh, pulled from the consent, which is item six B. And it was, it is recommended that P D R C W 5325 be received and that the application for minor exemption under the county force management bylaw, one uh, law 196 concession one E S T R. Oh. Oh, thank you. Okay. Sorry. Yep. Because we called the break in between the amendment and the main motion, we do need to go back to that main motion. So just before we get to six B, I'll stop there. And we do have the main motion still to take care of that we stopped short of just before our break and the main motion on. Make sure this is all clear. The main motion for seven F is that the report F R C W 1725 new multi-residential property tax class a subclass options and considerations be received for information. That is what we are voting on. Any further discussion on receiving for information? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. So uh, thank you very much for everyone's guidance in that. We'll return back to six B then. It's recommended that report P D R C W 5325 be received and that the application for minor exemption under the county force management bylaw for law 196 concession one E S T R geographic township of Artemisia. Now in the municipality of Gray Highlands, municipally known as 773093 highway 10 be approved. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Pringle, seconder. Seconded by Counselor Mackey. It's on the floor for discussion and um, uh, we'll bring up, uh, Sarah Johnson is all ready to make her, her presentation. And then we will go to the questions for which it was pulled. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I actually don't have a formal presentation prepared, but I'm willing, ready to take any questions that there may be.
Oh, okay. All right. So she is here uh, as a resource to answer any questions. So Counselor Greg, you requested this be pulled.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Warden. Uh, the question is, uh, Sarah, having sat uh, many years in the conservation authority and being able to see some of the the tree planting programs that are in place, some of them are taxpayer funded. This has the appearance of um, a plantation, um, an intentional plantation. I just wonder uh, is there anything currently in place that safeguards, um, if taxpayer funded programs were utilized for certain properties? Are they protected for a number of years against just being um, plowed under so, so to speak? Uh, or is that something that doesn't exist? However, it's something that we might be contemplating when we're looking at new tree bylaw and, and updates. Uh, because that's the one concern I have here is it kind of looks like uh, a youthful new planning. And uh, I think it, it could be frustrating to see taxpayer dollars expended on programs, uh, only to see them plowed under a couple of years after.
Through you, Warden. Um, I did have an opportunity um, this morning to reach out to Sogging Valley because it's their watershed that it's in. And I spoke with Donna Lacy about this property in particular. Um, S V C A did plant this property, but they have no record indicating that they used a funding program in, in order to do that. Um, that said, within the bylaw itself, there's no mechanism that um, restricts a land owner should they purchase property to prevent them from doing what you have, have indicated, you be plowing under uh, a, a previously planted um, uh, woodlands that has been used through those kind of funding programs. Oh, so, sorry. And, and just to add on that, the new bylaw itself, we're looking into ways as to how we can protect these properties a little bit better. Um, but um, I, as we know, we haven't got that, that far yet, but we are looking into ways that we can um, manage those properties. There are checks and balances specifically when people are doing harvesting applications. Um, that they have to indicate that, you know, they're part of the MIF tip program or that sort of thing. So um, there are, there are um, opportunities within the bylaw update for us to look into things like that.
I appreciate hearing that. That's a great um, feedback um, that you're still looking or potentially looking into that. Um, yeah, I know the managed forest programs are in place, but um, is, you know, this could be something like if you purchased a heritage building, it comes with certain uh, ex- expectations on the purchaser. So uh, it's just good to know that staff are, are evaluating the potential um, considerations there. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for our coordinator? Okay. Not seeing any then. We'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much for providing that information. Okay. That allows us now. Get ready. Here it comes. Okay. So we are on our last item for open, uh, seven G. And um, we may or may not need to go into closed for this particular item, only if uh, council members wish that they need some solicitor client privilege information. Um, advice. So with that then, I'll rec, it's recommended that report C S R C W 1925 regarding roof repairs for the roofing system at, at the Gray County administrative administration building be received. And that the county of Gray utilize Garland, Canada to complete the roof repairs and that the unbudgeted and that the unbudgeted funding for roof repairs be taken from any surplus realized in the twenty twenty-five property budget and the remaining funds be transferred from the administration properties reserve. Do we have a mover for that? Okay, moved by Counselor Carlton, seconder. Counselor Dobrine, thank you. It's moved and seconded. It's on the floor. Thank you very much, Senior Manager Whitney, and the floor is yours.
I'm, I'm just going to give a quick background on the roof. Basically, the roof on the existing part of the building was done in twenty seventeen as part of the renovation. We hired a consultant Garland, Canada to come in and oversee the work that was being done. They specify their products and then we go up to tender to get a contractor to complete the work. Last fall, we had a leak in one of our washrooms on the second floor. Upon further investigation, we found a small leak in the bear vault systems. We also noted that part of the flat roof was spongy and soft. We then had Garland, Canada back in and they did some probing and some thermal scans. So they go in at night and do a thermal scan and we found that four thousand square feet of roof is wet. So we had Pollard come in, they fixed the one leak. We haven't had any leaks since. So there is just wet insulation right now that we need to remove and add a new membrane to it. We did have a third party come in. We had DJ Pete, who is now Nedlaw, and they came up with some potential causes. The mechanical curbs are too low, there's not enough roof drains and rem bearing terminations that mechanical curbs are deficient. So we had them do up a quote for us. They are projecting two hundred and ten thousand dollars for a roof replacement. If we went with them, it would void our warranty with Garland. So we are recommending that we get Garland to do the specs, the drawings, tender it out and have them do it as that would keep the warranty going on the whole entire roof. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the existing leak or any issues.
Okay, thank you. So we've got questions. We'll begin with the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden. And I guess I'm having a little bit of trouble connecting the dots here, as it was earlier noticed. What would be the point of worrying about voiding the warranty if the warranty doesn't cover the work that is going to be, is being proposed here now? Can you help me with that, please?
So that's two options that, I mean, we have on the table right now. I mean, we can go with Garland. You, we can go to a different company and not have the warranty now. They would provide a warranty on their work for ten years, but we would void the warranty on the twenty-five years on the existing, the, the existing portion of the other roof. I guess is my answer. And there is some legal stuff involved in that, so.
Okay, so be careful because anything further than that, we would need to go into closed session to pursue that. I'll look to see if there are any other questions. We'll go to Counselor Dobrine.
Thank you. And, and I too had a similar question because the report says that it's not covered under warranty. But that if we choose anyone other than them, it will void the warranty. That it's not covered under?
Okay, I'm just gonna go over to the C A O first.
And Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think it's, it would potentially avoid the warranty on the remaining portions of the roof. So the other portions that we have currently under warranty with, with Garland.
Okay, so I'll put it out if there are other questions and we'll decide whether or not we need to go into closed session. Counselor McQueen?
You can, Madam Warden, a couple of questions. What does the warranty actually say? One. And obviously there was a leak and they fixed it. Did they do that repair regardless because of the warranty? But if the warranty, okay, maybe I'll stop there and come back. But what, what does the warranty say?
Right. Okay, I think at this point, in order for us to have full details, it would be best that we carry on this conversation in closed session. So with that then, Madam Clerk, if we go into closed session, we can entertain both items and then come back out to this as an open question, open session question. Okay, so let's, in order for staff to be able to provide full answers, let us recommend that the committee, the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended to discuss number one, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, and this is potential land exchanges with the township of Southgate. And number two, advice subject to solicitor client privilege if, as it's required about regarding the Gray County Administration Building Roof Repair. May ask for a mover. Counselor Dobrine moves and Counselor Mackey seconds to go into closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. So we'll take a moment to go into closed session and then we will carry on with our discussion. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So we have risen from closed session and I can report that the committee, the whole proceeded into closed session to discuss a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board regarding potential land exchanges with the township of Southgate and to receive advice subject to solicitor client privilege regarding the county administration building roof repair. And that direction was provided to staff during the meeting regarding the proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. So we are returning to the item we have moved and seconded but not yet voted on, item seven G. And we had moved and seconded that report C S R C W nineteen twenty-five regarding the roof repairs to the roofing system at Gray County Administration Building be received and that the county of Gray utilize Garland, Canada to complete the roof repairs and that the unbudgeted funding for the roof repairs be taken from any surplus realized in the twenty twenty-five property budget and the remaining funds be transferred from the administration properties reserved. It's been moved, seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Other business, item nine? Yes, Counselor McQueen?
Very briefly, I, I was, it's brought to my attention by a pass word and that twenty twenty-seven will be Gray County's one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. So I think it's something to think about. Thank you.
Okay, so one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary for the county of Gray coming up in twenty twenty-seven. Thank you. Nothing else? We'll go to notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion to serve today? Okay, not seen any hands go up. And with that, motion to adjourn? Moved by the Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Body. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you.